The Emeryville Planning Commission. Have roll call, please.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Gunkel.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Cumberly.
Here.
Commissioner Tan.
Here.
Vice Chair Moss.
Present.
Chair Cardoza.
Here.
All seven commissioners are present.
Next item is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda.
Sorry.
Seeing nobody wishing to speak. Next item will be action on the recap.
And Chair, I do have a comment on the recap.
Okay.
On the study session, item 5A, on the comments that the commissioner made, I'd like to make the addition of, I know that for sure, I made comments to the developer and to the commission, and I believe Commissioner Cumberly and Moss also kind of made it clear that we did say that maybe we thought housing was not the appropriate thing to put in that lot, for that location. So I'd just like to minister reflect, at least I had told the developer that perhaps, at least not all housing, maybe something of mix of housing and commercial or hotel or something. But I would put it on the second page, the first paragraph.
Oh, the, this is the NADI project?
Correct.
Saying that housing is not necessarily...
Yeah, I told the developer that I felt that maybe housing, because of its location in the industrial area that is zoned that way in our general plan, that maybe something more like commercial or hotel would be more fitting, or at least a mix, not all housing.
Okay.
And I put in my notes that Commissioner Moss had also said that, but I don't know if he wants to comment on that or not.
I think our, I wouldn't characterize my comments exactly the same way. So, I don't know, I guess I would maybe just suggest leaving it a little bit open-ended. Just, you know, if you wanted to encapsulate.
As I recall, the issue was that the site is zoned mixed use with residential, which requires residential and then with some other mix of uses with it. When the general plan came to the planning commission for adoption back in 2009, I believe that the commission recommended that that site, that whole quadrant of the city be mixed use with non-residential. And the city council, when they adopted the general plan, changed it. They changed the designation of that site and that area to mixed use with residential. And what I thought I heard during the study session was that some of you had misgivings about that, that you didn't necessarily agree with the city council's designation of this area for residential. But that is how it's zoned.
Okay. I think I'd still like my comments to reflect that I felt the developer might want to come back with something other than residential, or at least something with a mix of uses, that maybe residential, commercial, hotel, or something, but not all residential.
Okay, we'll make that note.
That's all I have.
I would like to also add to that one. I thought it was really important that that perimeter path that was proposed around the building was not adequate open space for a residential project.
Okay.
Not adequate usable open space, anyway.
If, I hate to do this, but if we're, if we're, you know, doing this, I think, I remember also many of us saying, talking about sort of the materials that were used and the wanting higher quality materials.
I would agree with that.
With those modifications.
Let's make sure Charlie has it.
Okay.
With those modifications, I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that was moved by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Commissioner Donaldson, and without objection, with those changes, okay?
Next item on the agenda is director's report.
I'd like to report to you on the actions that the city council has taken since your last meeting. You last met on December 12th, and the council has met twice since then, on December 17th and January 21st. On December 17th, the council introduced a cleanup ordinance of the planning regulations to update the penalty provisions in the municipal code related to the planning regulations in Title IX, and to correct a number of typographical errors in the planning regulations. This didn't come before the commission first, because really, it was truly just fixing typos. Final passage of that ordinance is scheduled for February 4th. You may recall that the commission approved the use permit for the broken rack billiard hall on Pellidou Street back in September, and there was the issue about greenway access. They also needed a minor conditional use permit to access the greenway, but before that could be considered, we had to determine what the value of the access was. And then their question was whether or not they would have to pay it, or how much they would have to pay, and so forth. So, an appraisal was completed after you approved the use permit that determined the value to be $50,000. That went to the city council with a recommendation that that fee be waived, in light of the benefit to the city of having that use at that location, and also the fact that they are providing about $14,000 worth of greenway improvements. And the city council decided, rather than waive the access fee entirely, that they would reduce it to a token amount of $1,000. So it was reduced from $50,000 to $1,000, which the applicant subsequently paid. And then the minor conditional use permit for the greenway access was approved by me on December 20th. And that project is now in for building permits. On January 21st, the mayor gave the annual state of the city address, laying out her vision for the direction of the city in the coming year. The council also, on the consent calendar, approved three consultant contracts for the planning department, including the environmental review for the 6701 Shellmount project, that's the NADI project, for a traffic study for the marketplace Phase 1B project, and also for planning assistance for timely completion of the housing element. We've hired a consulting planner to help us complete our housing element. The council took several actions related to the transit center. They approved two resolutions and an ordinance to ensure the completion of the project, which as you recall, was approved by the council back in 2010. One resolution was for an agreement for public improvement funding between the city and Wareham. The second resolution was for an environmental remediation and escrow agreement between the city, Wareham, and CBS. And the ordinance was a development agreement between the city and Emory Station Associates, LLC. The development agreement will lock the entitlements in for an additional five years, and final passage of that ordinance is expected at the February 4th meeting. As the commission may recall, you reviewed this development agreement at your October 24th meeting, and you forwarded it to the city council without a recommendation. You were deadlocked in your vote. And finally, the city council had a briefing and provided comments on the Emeryville-Berkeley-Oakland Transit Study, or EBOTs. They provided some good comments, similar to those that you provided at your last meeting. And so with that, that concludes the data gathering phase of the EBOT study, and we're now moving into the phase of developing alternatives for future consideration by the commission and council. So that is the city council report. I have one other announcement, very important announcement. I would like to introduce Ms. Sarah Billing, sitting over here. Sarah is our new assistant planner. She will be making her debut presentation to the commission tonight. I'm pleased to announce that she has been appointed to the position of full-time permanent assistant planner, effective on Monday, February 3rd. As you may know, she's been filling in on a temporary part-time basis since October 1st, following the departure of Arlie Cassidy, and she's been doing an outstanding job. Some of you may know Sarah from her previous employment with the city as a temporary planning technician in 2008, and also as a planning intern, working on the general plan and zoning update in 2009 and to 2011. She's a graduate of Berkeley High, she has a bachelor's degree in urban studies from San Francisco State, and a master's degree in urban and regional planning from San Jose State. So please join me in congratulating Sarah on this well-deserved appointment.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions? Next item on the agenda will be public hearings. First one will be the market, public market identification signs.
And Chair Cardoza, I need to recuse myself because of my living proximity to the project.
Good evening, commissioners.
Yeah, really.
Is that a good distance for the microphone?
Yeah, lift it a little bit.
Perfect.
All right. I'll go with what he says. All right. So today, we're looking at the public market identification signs at 5959 Shellmount Street. This is the public market. To the south is Powell Street. To the east are the railroad tracks. To the north, over here, 64th Street. And to the west, we have the freeway, and closer in, we have Christie. So this is the existing site plan of the public market, which we're probably all familiar with. We have a public market building here, we have a brick building on this side, and a tower building here. This is a long Shellmount. And on the east side of the public market main entrance, this is where one of the proposed signs is. And on the north side, going over an alley that is between the tower building and the brick building, is where the second proposed sign is. The commission has recently looked at the proposed final development plan, or FDP, for the site, and this would change the area in the following ways. Here we have Shellmount Street, which compared to the previous slide, has been moved west, closer to the face of the public market building on the east side here. So here is that same sign on the east side of the building, directly adjacent to the street now. On the north side, where there used to be, or currently is a parking lot, the proposed plan shows pedestrian plaza, as well as a grocery store to the north. Also across the street from Shellmount will be a parking garage. Oops. Yep, okay. So this is the existing public market sign on the east side. You can see the dimensions there. This plan would remove the existing sign and the awnings as well. The night rendering did not show up very well, it's not a full moon night. And you can see here that this is a V-shaped sign, and the dimensions are down here, for a total of 317 square feet. The north sign location bridges the brick building and tower across the alley. That's the current existing rendering there of the site area. So the existing sign on the north side is actually on the building face, at the end of the alley, not at the entrance to the alley. That would be removed, and replaced with a proposed sign at the entrance to the alley. And here, I need to note that the applicant has refined this part of the proposal, and will be providing you details about this during their presentation. So don't pay too much attention to these dimensions. I believe you received revised plans directly before the meeting, and they should have the current proposed dimensions. Yes, that's correct. So conformity to the sign requirements, the sign requirements for approval require looking at context, size, materials, and sign location. The findings show that the signs are necessary to identify the main building entrances. The V shape provides unique visibility and character dimension to the buildings. They're architecturally compatible with existing buildings. And the new signs continue to use the existing sign design while adding visual interest. So that neon and the renderings, I'll go back. The neon renderings is consistent with what's currently there, they're just on a different structure and different scale. So for site plan comparison, here's the existing site plan at the top and the proposed one. What's significant about this with the findings is that with relocation, the proposed relocation of Shellmount Street and the public plaza, it really narrows the vantage point of the signs. So for a wall sign that's flat against the walls we currently have, the vantage point really is best directly in front of it, not from side to side. As you can see with the placement of the new buildings, that's not really going to be an option in the future. So the V shape provides an opportunity to see the sign on the east, from both the north and the south along Shellmount, and on the north side, across the pedestrian plaza to the east and west. So some examples of signs that are similar, they're illuminated signs on large frames, they're iconic with the areas they're associated with for both their specific location, as well as the cities that they're located in. And they also are designed to fit in with their particular architectural context. So for example, the Seattle Public Market signs, they are also illuminated signs. These ones are on top of the building on a large metal frame, and these are designed particularly here, these ones, to be seen from a distance up a steep hill. So at, directly in front of this location, you have to, you know, crane your neck, but if you're two blocks away, it's perfectly in your sightline. So it's designed to fit in with the context, similarly to the V shape of these proposed signs in Emeryville. And the Grand Lake Theater sign is another example of illuminated roof sign on a large metal frame, closer to home, which you're probably all familiar with. And of course, you can't really see it from, directly from the building, but you can from the surrounding area. And it's kind of iconic for Oakland. So in conclusion, staff recommend approval, and if you have any questions for me at this time, or if you'd like to hear from the applicant first, considering the changes that have been made, whatever you prefer.
No questions, I guess. Applicant will now speak.
My name is Max Chrome, Chrome Architecture, out of San Rafael. I have quite a long history with the Emeryville Public Market. We did the Pete's Coffee there about eight or nine years ago, and ever since, we've been acting as the architect for the ownership, which has transferred recently. And we're lucky enough to sort of stay on with the projects. We're very happy with, to be involved, and happy to be involved with the City of Emeryville. I think staff did a wonderful job of summarizing, and so I'll keep my comments brief and limited to the changes that we made to the presentation. So let me see if, just use these arrows here to go to the next?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. So the east entrance sign is identical in our proposal from what you have in your package. So there's no difference there. What has changed is the north entrance sign. The rendering was incorrect, it didn't match the floor plan, and so this rendering has been updated to match the floor plan precisely. That kind of changed the proportion of the sign, and changed the square footage slightly. So if you look at the plan here, we've gone from, there's a north face and a west face to these two signs. And so the north face in the original proposal was 231 square feet, and in the new proposal, it's 213 square feet. So it got a little smaller, as we changed the proportion. The west-facing sign was originally 134 square feet, and in the new proposal, it's 168 square feet. So it's, that one got larger. So in total, we went from 365 to 381 for a net increase in scenery of 16 square feet. So we wanted to point that out to you, and that's what's different in the proposal that you're looking at tonight, as opposed to what you got in your packet. Having said that, I just want to reiterate that the public market, you know, we feel that the character of the building, how old it is, and kind of the history that it has in Emeryville, we feel that these signs kind of have a similar flavor to the interior of the market, and set the tone, kind of set it at an exciting, exciting stage for people to come and visit. The move to put the sign at the front of the arcade, or the courtyard in the back, is really to activate that. If you're a customer of the public market, you may have noticed that people don't tend to hang out there as much as they could, and we feel with the changes that are happening in the development plan, it's an opportunity to activate that part of the center. So I'll end my comments at that, and be happy to address any questions you may have.
I have a question. So what was the, why was a change made?
The change was made because the, originally, the elevations in the plan didn't match. If you'll notice, the, I'll go back to the rendering here. In the original rendering, the sign didn't go all the way to the front of the post, it was set further back. And so when we moved that to come up to the front, it changed the proportion of the V shape.
Okay.
And so when we relayed out the letters...
It's connecting at the post in the same position in both the old and the new drawings, so I'm just confused.
In floor plan, yes, but in the rendering, no.
Okay.
So in elevation, no.
I was curious about the letter spacing on the north-facing, on the west-facing sign.
Yes.
The letters look like they're the same height, but they're going to be pushed together substantially closer, is that correct?
It could be, and this is, if you felt strongly about it, we could certainly change the spacing of the letters to match the square footage, so that they were identical to your original proposal. We just felt that this was the correct way to do it, just looking at it graphically.
What are the dimensions of the existing sign?
The dimensions of, the one that's up now, it is 197 square feet.
In the renderings, it's always, especially, I guess in all the cases, it's showing the new exterior wall finishes, are the, which I don't think have been approved yet.
That's correct.
So are the, are these signs going up on the existing wall finishes until the new finishes are approved?
Yeah, that's...
I think the new finishes have been approved through minor design review already.
Oh.
Right? Excuse me?
Should I speak from here to them?
Yes.
Okay. So there was a minor design review application for the public market that I believe was approved in December, it was very recent anyway. And it was for changes to the alley, or I believe you called it an arcade space, and asked to be able to put murals up on some of the furniture, and that also included wood facade, which I believe is what you're referring to around the public market sign. And so that has been approved as part of that design review, which was done on the staff level, it was a minor design review application.
And then, so on one of the, I think on the rendering, the rendering and the elevation of the east sign have the wood siding stopping at different locations. On the elevation, it extends the entire width of this volume. And then on the rendering, the two walls on the sides cut into it at the sign, at the location where the sign starts. So basically, the rendering looks like the sign is smaller than it does on the elevation. I'm just wondering, which one of those is correct?
The elevation is correct.
Okay. Do you have a rendering that represents the elevation?
No, we don't, but we could produce one.
Well, isn't A200 sheet?
Yeah, A200 I think is correct, and then A201 is incorrect. And then on the plan for the, for the north sign, your, maybe the revised one shows it, previously at least, it didn't show the bracing. No, I guess it's still not, but it would have the same, same bracing system as the other one.
Yeah, correct.
What are the plans regarding pigeon spikes or, you know, shock tape? Are there plans for the signs, or?
We haven't, we don't have plans. We are, we haven't done the detailed drawings of the sign yet. I work with staff to determine what, kind of what the appropriate deterrent would be for the sign.
So basically, the east-facing sign would be two, twice the size, so...
That's correct.
It's the existing public, new public market sign, you just have another one.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will these have any control over the brightness?
Yes, part of the conditions is that they would be on a dimmer, that the light would be on a dimmer.
Would they be on all night?
I assume that that's subject to city ordinance, and I, normally, these things are on a time clock. The typical thing is to turn it on an hour before sunset and turn it off an hour after closing, is a typical practice. I don't know if there is a particular ordinance that governs that or not.
Don't believe there is.
Right now, the conditions just say that to provide a dimmer switch, and it's at the discretion of you.
Me, right.
To decide whether it needs to be dimmed, so if they're...
That's right.
Under what conditions would that occur, complaints, or?
Yeah, right. We didn't want to get too specific about what would trigger it, or what would constitute too much brightness, so we left it kind of generic. It says, "A dimmer switch shall be installed as part of the sign installation, and the sign shall be dimmed to the satisfaction of the director of planning and building if the director determines the illumination to be too bright." So if we get a complaint, and we go out and look at it and say, "Yeah, we think it's too bright," or if staff just notices that it seems to be too bright, you know, if for any reason we determine that it's too bright, then we can require them to dim it until it's not too bright.
Any further questions?
Can you go back, or maybe Sarah, can you go back to the slides that showed the square footages of both of the signs?
Sure.
I don't think it's in our presentation. I can go back to yours here. Okay.
I think it's the next one, isn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I was most curious actually about the, sort of the comparison between the existing and the proposed square footages.
Would you like me to bring up, for the east side?
Yeah, yeah.
For the east side sign?
Yeah.
Sure. So I'm just going to reduce this again.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So here is the existing sign, and these were the measurements I found from our approved sign application for this sign. So nine by 10 high, 19 by 11 across, and approximately 196. I believe that was fairly close to what you stated.
I came up with 197, but...
Oh, okay.
Highly contested.
I'm sorry.
That's including the framing?
For this sign, it includes the full frame because of the way that it's mounted on the building. For the proposed signs, the calculations that I included here are for the lettering and not the actual structure, because the supportive structure in this case is not included as part of, is not considered part of the actual sign. It's considered a supportive structure. So we do have the measurements for the supportive structure, though, as well.
So the previous sign was, what, 200 square?
Mm-hmm.
195, yeah.
195, for a wall flat against. And then for the V, each face would be 160, so slightly smaller than the existing sign, but two faces.
About a 60% increase.
Are the lettering sizes comparable, the lettering heights?
I did not, well, I think they'd be slightly smaller than if the, oops, if the existing one is 100, well, yeah, it'd be about the same.
It's comparable. It's, the height is actually a little taller than the existing letters. The, I'm sorry, the proposal, the letters are...
Would you like to use the...
Existing, if that was clear. We're proposing taller letters.
Oh, okay, so it's not going to be just double what's there?
The...
In square footage.
It's less than double.
If we're just counting the letters.
If you're just counting the letters, yeah.
So how is sign area defined so that it includes the frame before but not now?
Well, it's the transparency, isn't it? The fact that it's just a transparent grid that's holding it up.
I can look for the particular part in the sign code if you like, but in some situations, the framing, I believe, like in this example, for its wall, it would count because it's clearly part of the actual sign. Whereas other signs, if it says it's a supportive structure, which this is, so that the sign can be out on a V, it's not part of the actual, considered actually part of the sign face. Is that, yes?
Is the new sign going to have that kind of mesh that's on the existing sign, or is it going to be more open?
It's going, it's planned to be more open, so it's mounted on, the letters are mounted on the vertical members.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Now open it for public comment.
Hi, Tito Young, well, things bright. I really like the design. I think it's a really cool idea. It's just two things that kind of struck me, and part of it has to do with the fact that if it's raining, will it drip on people? Second one is, on the backside of the building, I know there's kind of like a no man's land. This would be on the, this would be on the side facing the freeway, and the market seems to have a kind of a, kind of a no man's land back there, and maybe, maybe trying to do something, maybe some kind of recognition would work there. And also possibly, the kiosk's idea are, I mean, the motif is neat. It'd be neat to kind of come up with a design that kind of carries off the motif on either bollards or some, you know, maybe on waste baskets or something like that in the neighboring areas or something of that sorts, had my comment.
Close public meeting.
You're looking at me?
Start at that end.
Yeah, I like the signs. I do, I guess one concern is that they're going to end up with pigeon spikes on them, and it's going to detract from the appearance, so I'd like to maybe see a condition of approval that if there is any kind of pest control, that it be something that's not visible, such as shock tape. And I don't know, I actually had noticed the diff, you know, the issue with the sign on the north side, that the rendering wasn't matching the plan previously, and actually kind of liked the old rendering. Currently, the, I don't know, with the two different sides, I guess the issue is probably that the one side is slightly obstructed by, by the building, by the brick building. But I'm also curious as to whether having the two different sizes of sides with the brace behind it, I, I don't know. These signs lend themselves to symmetry, I think, to a certain degree. They're very, very classical, and so to have the one sort of, you know, obscured, you know, shifted, I just wonder if it's going to be as attractive in that regard. Those are my only comments.
Commissioner Gunkel, can you help us to understand? I'm just trying to understand your comments on what the inconsistency is.
Okay, so if you look at the plan...
This is page 202?
Yeah, on A1 point, or A101.
101.
The sign to the north, the, it's not a perfect triangle, it's bas, or it's, the two legs of the triangle are different sizes. If you look at the old rendering, it's actually drawn as if the two are the same sizes, and because the faces of the...
On 202?
A202. So if you look at the old A202, the sign's drawn as if it, if both the sides of the triangle are the same, and therefore, because the one, the wall of the tower building sticks out further, or, yeah, sorry, the wall, the brick building sticks out further than the wall of the tower building, it hits the corner of the tower building, but it hits further back on the brick building.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Whereas on the new renderings, they're representing what they're showing on the plan, which is, in order to hit the corners of both buildings, they basically lengthen one side of the triangle and shorten the other side.
Only in the rendering, the plan is the same in both cases.
Yeah, the plans always have shown that the same. And it also makes me curious as to, it's still not clear to me, are these letters the same size on both sides then, if they're different sizes of sides? And then the spacing is what accommodates the different sizes of the sides? Or are the letters actually bigger on one side than the other?
I think he's, I raised that question, and I think he said they're just closer together.
Closer together.
Well, the thing that was missing in the material that was in your packet that is included now is an elevation drawing of this northern sign. Previously, you didn't have that elevation drawing, so you couldn't really see how the letters would end up being spaced.
What sheet is that?
It's the new page, A202.
But that, I mean, I believe, that's not a, that's not a head-on elevation. That's, that's not an elevation that is perpendicular to each face. It's an actual head-on elevation of the sign, so it still makes it kind of difficult to tell what's going on.
True.
Well, no, I mean, number four shows the, the actual dimension of the sign and the spacing.
Yeah.
So it's like it's been folded out flat?
Well, it hasn't been folded out.
Yeah, it hasn't. It's...
You can see if you look...
Dimensioning it, but it hasn't been folded out visually.
Item number four?
You can see, if you look at the letters, that you can see the edges of the letters, which indicates that you're looking at them kind of obliquely.
But you're looking at the, at this...
But I take it, are the dimensions that are on four, are those actually in plane with the wall, the faces?
The actual, you know, the dimensions are from the, from the plan view. So if you look at the plan...
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
I see, yeah, I see.
Yeah, if you look at the dimensions taken from the plan, I'd be happy to explain the idea behind the asymmetry, if you'd like.
Sure.
It's really more of a practical concern of putting sort of the face of the sign toward where we believe traffic will be coming from, and sort of where the main public will be viewing the sign from. And so we, you know, we don't think you'll really be seeing it from a straight-on view in the future development plan, and so it's really meant to address how traffic will flow, and we feel that, you know, that was a logic kind of doing it a little asymmetrically.
Car traffic or pedestrian traffic?
I think both.
Any, any further comment?
Did you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. Well, I like the design of the sign in terms of the colors and the font, the size of the letters. I think that the north sign, the one that's asymmetrical, I was just wondering if he might have considered doing maybe signs that are not attached to the buildings, something that's, or not directly attached, something that's more symmetrical, maybe it's mounted to columns, something that gives more of an archway or a type of entrance to that arcade area that's more symmetrical. I'm just not sure, it's hard to tell how this is going to look on this sort of skew, skewed angle. I definitely see what you're trying to tackle with, you know, one building sticking out farther than the other, but I don't know, I think that would be something to consider. That's the only comment I have.
Yeah, it is a little bit hard. It would be not, sorry, it would have been, it would have been nice to get the renderings done, one from each direction, so you could get a better sense of how that was going to look. I kind of worry that it will end up looking a little bit like a mistake, but otherwise, I'm liking the rest of the package here.
I would agree with that. I think it's generally an improvement over what's there now.
I'm a tortured soul on this one. I, I like the project. I think it's good, but I, I have difficulty with the sign findings. I always have. I don't like the way they're written, and I sort of anticipated that this would happen someday, and I think it has. I think the first two findings are kind of on a collision course with each other. The first one is that the, this, oh, I'm sorry, it's the second and third findings. No, it's not. Oh, no, it's, it's the second and fifth findings. So the sign will be readable, and then the proposed sign is no larger than is necessary to adequately identify the establishment. So it sort of presumes that there's, there's one exact size, but larger or smaller is not, is not acceptable. And then that finding goes on to say, or the sign is of extraordinary design significance to justify its size, which I think is a really tall order. So like I said, I like the signs, so I hope I'm the only one that has a problem with the findings, but I do, I'm not sure I can make them.
I had a question about the, there's a sign program for the entire marketplace, is that correct, a sign?
I believe there is, but these are not included in that.
Okay, I was sort of referencing back to, I'm not sure which commissioner had mentioned it, maybe it was Brad. The timing of the, when they go off and on, is that something that we could have as a condition of approval within this?
You certainly could. I don't believe the existing master sign program has any such condition, and there's no such condition on the current public market signs. And it hasn't been a problem...
A problem.
...that I'm aware of.
I, I agree about the asymmetry and concerns about it reading not as a mistake. I think, oh, gosh, I'm not a graphic designer, but I think there's something to do with spacing, is it called kerning? Yeah, I think that might not read well. And you will kind of see one and the other at the same time, so I hesitate to approve this asymmetrical sign because of that. I really don't want it to look like you didn't mean to do it, and then you just had to anyway. At the same time, I'm not really certain what the answer is, because you're probably going to want the top and bottom to be similar all the way across. And there's no way to even it out without making a post out in space or some such thing, or having another perpendicular channel iron, and then out and out?
No, I mean, really, it's a design choice. You know, the steel can support it, we could certainly make it symmetrical. It wouldn't, it would point, because of the, kind of the buildings themselves being asymmetrical, it's a design choice. It is a little bit mystical, but, but I think it kind of speaks to the industrial nature of the site, and it kind of, to me, it feels more like it's a found thing, like you're putting something up there. And I know we're making this from scratch, but I think, you know, sticking to rigid symmetry isn't, isn't always the answer. You know, some of these things, like to let it be a little more organic and let the signs be a little different, I think is very much in character with the marketplace, and that's really why we made the decision. I, you know, if the commissioners felt very strongly that that was a mistake, of course, we would, we would be open to revising it, but, but we feel that the proportions that we presented are nice and that they will work well together.
You've done a drawing straight on of the smaller of the two, and you feel like it's readable, it looks good?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and because it's addressing a lesser audience, we feel that sort of giving sort of more credence to the other sign, it's kind of using the square footage more wisely as well.
Well, I think it's important that the, that the angle be there so that people driving up the street would see it from that direction. And if you made it proportional, that side would get almost flat with the building.
Well, one could, could come out perpendicularly and then have it...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, could be done. It's not that difficult. So I don't know what the other commissioners feel very strongly about that. It could go either way, and...
I don't.
Ambivalent.
I mean, I like the idea of coming out perpendicular and then having both pieces of the triangle be the same size, but I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, I would tend to agree that the, the original rendering was a little bit preferable.
If I can say that, the original rendering also was...
Microphone, please.
Come on up to the mic.
The original rendering was also an asymmetrical, it really was the same concept, it just kind of scooted one leg out, but the length of the legs relative to one another really didn't change much from one to the other.
Okay.
Wish to make a motion on this?
I mean, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve it with the stipulations that the, the sign on the north side be modified so that the two faces are the same size, and that, that whatever pest control is used is not visible.
Let me ask this, if the sign, the overall framing of the sign, the supporting structure is not symmetrical, but the letters were kerned in the same way so that the actual sign faces, would that also be a possible solution?
As the designers, we would prefer that solution. That would give us flexibility in creating the frame correctly and to connect correctly, but then have the signs match one another, and maybe that would...
So you just pull the letters closer to... -pull the letters closer together on the big side?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, no, I don't, actually, that wouldn't be it, would it? You would pull the letters closer together? How would that work?
We, we would maybe stretch one and shrink the other, so that they had a harmonious relationship to the, to the size of the frame, but-
But the, uh, vertical height would remain the same?
Yeah, and I think we could, you know, we could establish the sort of, like, that the square footage, the net square footage wouldn't increase from what's presented.
So basically, they would both be spaced the same?
Yeah, they would be identical signs, not necessarily identical faces, and that I think we could make work.
I could go with that.
Yeah, that sounds like, I think I-
Not sure how we would, we're gonna write that up.
So basically, we're saying that on the north, north side of the building, that the, the frame is all right, but the letter spacing should be identical on both signs.
Right.
So it effectively makes the sign area the same on both signs-
Yes, yeah.
-because that's all we're counting?
Right.
So is that your motion then?
Sure.
And I'll, and that any pest control not be visible, such as shock tape, right?
Do we wanna put anything in about the timed, about-
The dimming?
Well, the dimming's already in, but about whether it turns off-
That's what I meant.
Well, generally, that's up to the planning director.
It's in as, it's in as a condition of approval.
So it's- Dimming is right now, but I'm just wondering if we want it off, especially, I mean, there is a sign currently on east, there is no sign, I mean, the only sign on the north side now is tucked back in that alley, I don't know if-
Well, there's the signs on the movie theater, which of course will be coming down.
That's true.
Then there are gonna be new, there's new residents coming in-
New residential facing this building.
So I wanna make sure that, uh, how would we say, if there was some complaint about signage being on later than two hours after it's closed, or, I mean, I don't, is that, we'd never have had a problem that there are-
To my knowledge, there is no restriction on when signs can be on or off at Bay Street.
Right.
And there are almost 400 dwelling units there, on top of those retail stores, and I've never had a complaint about those signs.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know that it's really an issue.
Would you like the language for the sign that's currently there?
Sure.
So, the condition of approval for the public market entry sign that currently exists is if any complaints about the brightness of the sign reading "public market" and facing east are received, the applicant will adjust the time when the sign's lighting turns off to an earlier time in the evening and/or later time in the morning.
So we could, we could forward that to the new sign, that, okay, that latter-
Okay, is there, are there hours that are given for when the sign is to be turned on and off?
No, it just says if there, if any complaints about it come through.
I, I would at least add "at the discretion of the planning director," to give a little more flexibility.
Yeah.
All right, so you wanna add that language to the, below the dimmer condition?
At discretion of the planning director, if there are complaints.
The hours, dot, whatever, yeah.
Dot, 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 yeah. What she said. Is it still your motion?
It sounds like, it's everybody's now.
I'll still second it.
Has Charlie got the motion?
I think so. So what I've got is that the, for the north, the north sign, the letters, lettering on both faces shall have the same spacing. Um, any pest control shall not be visible, such as shock tape, and we will add the condition similar to the one from the existing sign about hours and complaints, and add language at the discretion of the planning director.
Wasn't it spacing, height, and width, I mean, or height as well, not width necessarily, but-
Well, no, they were the same height already.
Oh, well, okay, there are the same size letters, is my understanding.
Okay.
They just, the spacing is all the change.
I don't know how that's gonna work without changing the height, but, okay.
Okay, so that was moved by Commissioner Gunkel and seconded by Commissioner Donaldson? Correct? All right, you ready to vote?
Did you second that?
Yes, we did.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller is recused, Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Tan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Moss?
An exceedingly reluctant no.
And Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Five ayes, one no, the application is approved, this decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
And I would just like to say, I hope that the supporting structure can be designed to minimize the rain dripping on people when they're coming in, as the, as the member of the public pointed out. That's not gonna be a good thing for the businesses in there.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is planning regulation amendment for emergency shelters, supportive housing, and transitional housing.
Good evening, Commissioner, Happy New Year. My first item this year is gonna be a code amendment. So the amendment is to, is regarding emergency shelters and supportive and transitional housing, and the reason for the changes is that the California state bill, known as SB2, obligates all cities in, in the state to establish a zoning district that allows emergency shelters as a land use that is permitted by right. It also requires supportive and transitional housing developments to be considered as residential uses, subject to those same restrictions that apply to other residential units of the same type in the same, in the same zone. Our current planning regulations are in compliance with the emergency, emergency shelters being a portion of SB2, as shelters are allowed by right in the MURS zone. Regarding the supportive and transitional housing, these are included in the regulations under the residential use category. However, the staff believes that the following refinements are necessary. One is adding performance standards for shelters, because as you will note, they are now allowed by right in certain zones, and we do not have any performance standards for users of this type. And the second reason is to allow the subdivision of the supportive and transitional housing category into a single unit, two-unit, and multi-unit classifications, so that they match up with the residential uses of a single family, duplex, and multifamily. So that's the reason why we are doing the same for supportive and transitional housing. I'll go through the proposed standards for the emergency shelters. We have come up with these standards by looking at other cities in the area and in the state, as well as talking to a planner in a city where an, where an emergency shelter actually exists and has been in operation for several years. So talking in terms of, we talked about what kind of potential issues that there might have been. So with that in mind, these are the standards that we are proposing. One is regarding the number of beds, the other one is the need for a waiting area, the other one pertains to outdoor activities and restricting them to certain hours, and location as well, and the screening if there are, you know, if there is a drop-off for food or other items. There's also a location requirement, making sure that if no shelter is within 300 feet of any other shelter. Another, another one regarding lighting, security, then a management plan, making sure that the operators have thought of various things regarding staff training, what happens with neighbor relations, security screening, so we would, the operator would need to give us this management plan before they can go in and get their business license. There's also a requirement regarding onsite staffing, and the last two refer to compliance with the operation with any applicable federal, state, and local regulations, and also life safety regulations regarding building, fire, or health and safety codes. Moving on to the supportive and transitional housing, so all that we are doing is amending the table which outlines all the various uses, and whether they are allowed by right, conditionally permitted, or prohibited in various different zones. So what you see is, the existing is being crossed off, so this is what we have in our current code, and what we are proposing is dividing up this category into single and two-unit, and multi-unit, and making sure that what is allowed in different zones is consistent with the residential uses as well. So wherever a single family or duplex is allowed, that is where the supportive housing of that nature would be allowed, and the same thing with transitional housing. So that's the only change that is happening to the regulations, and this, that change would be to the table. So we are recommending that the adoption, one of the reasons for recommendation for adoption of this is that it would fulfill policy for a four of the city's housing element, which ends this year, and, which is also needed for the compliance with SB2. Implementation of these changes is required, and it's a necessary action to be eligible for certain grants, and making this changing would also make our next housing element, when it goes for certification to the HCD, this will allow it to follow the streamline update option rather than the regular option, so it shortens the process and makes life easier for Diana, so to speak. So with that, we recommend that the commission approve the proposed amendments, and recommend to the city council to approve these amendments as well. So that concludes my presentation, if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Are there any facilities of this sort existing in the city at this time?
Uh, no, we don't have any emergency shelters, or as far as I know, supportive or transitional housing developments.
Or any potentially coming up?
Not that I'm aware of. Actually, I have never fielded a call or an inquiry for any of these housing so far.
Could you just give us the definition of the two types?
The supportive and the transitional.
And the emergency shelter, just so that we're really clear on the functions.
So supportive housing is defined as housing with no limit to the length of stay that is linked to supportive services, either on or off-site, to assist residents in retaining the housing, improving their health status, and maximizing the ability to live, and when possible, work in the community. Transitional housing is defined as temporary housing of six to 24 months with supportive services. Accommodations may consist of shared living quarters with more than one room or unit sharing kitchen, and/or bathroom facilities. Self-sufficiency development services are provided with the goal of moving residents to permanent housing. And you wanted, let's see.
Page 210.
And the emergency shelters is housing with minimal supportive services for homeless persons that is limited to occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person or family. Medical assistance, counseling, and meals may be provided.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the zoning and where these are placed. When I looked at the current housing element, it showed two locations, one in the northeast of town in the industrial area, and one down in the south side of town near the Pack and Save. Is that what is currently, or is that what is proposed for these placement of these shelters?
The emergency shelters, right now, they're allowed by right in the, near the Pack and Save.
Okay.
Area.
When we did the new planning regulations and the new zoning map, a decision was made to select one of those two areas that are shown in the housing element. It's not a requirement that we allow them in both of those areas. The housing element identified two possible areas, and when the regulations were adopted, the decision was made to go with the southern one.
Okay, so the one in the northeast of town isn't in consideration anymore?
No.
Okay, 'cause that was my preference, is to leave the non-residential out of that area?
Right.
Okay, so we're just talking about now putting this in the one area of town?
It's actually already there. I mean, the, the MURS zone already permits emergency shelters by right under the new planning regulations. This would simply enact standards for them, so that when they come in-
But only in the south parcel of town?
Excuse me?
Only in the south parcel of town, not in the northeast?
Correct.
Good, okay.
Well, actually, it should be noted that emergency shelters are also permitted with a conditional use permit in some other zoning districts as well, and these standards would apply also if they needed a conditional use permit. The standards also stipulate that that conditional use permit must be considered by the planning commission, it can't be a minor conditional use permit.
I'm more concerned about what's by right.
Right, well, yes.
So if it has to come to us, that's fine, then we-
We are too, that's why we felt, we didn't want them just coming in without any standards, and we have to approve them.
Sounds good.
I, I guess I'm a little confused, what, can you go back to the chart that you had? So my understanding per this chart was that is P does not require a conditional use permit.
Correct, P is by right.
And then CM is conditional use-
It's minor conditional use permit.
So-
And X, yeah.
Based on this, then, wouldn't, wouldn't an emergency shelter be allowed, like a multi-unit shelter be allowed anywhere, where there's-
No, this is-
This is not emergency shelters.
Oh.
This is supportive and transitional housing only.
Oh, okay, okay.
So for the emergency shelters, all we are doing is adding those performance standards.
Okay, so then for the, for the transitional housing?
Correct.
That would be by right, anywhere where there's a P here, and then a minor conditional use permit where there's the CM?
That is correct, and this is, and where it is a P, and where it's a CM, and where it's an X, is consistent with housing. So wherever single-family houses are allowed by right, in the same location, supportive housing, which consists of a single or two units, would be allowed by right. So we are making that, that is what SB2 requires us to do, to make it consistent with the housing.
And would you say that a typical, like transitional housing, or supportive housing development would require a design review, to tran, even to take an existing building to create?
The same design review standards would apply as they apply to any other new structure or an existing structure.
Mm-hmm.
So whether it's a major design review or a minor design review depends on the kind of changes that are being made. If it's a new building, obviously it will need a major design review.
Mm-hmm.
So that does not change anything, you're not changing that.
Mm-hmm.
It's only more where it is allowed, and, and how, so what kind of permits it's needed in the areas where they're allowed.
Any further questions in Maru?
I move approval.
You need to hold a public hearing.
That's right, sorry.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item?
Hi, this is Tito Young. It's really hard to see this, this graph, so make public hearings really tough to see it, but I think emergency housing was something that I've been kind of following for a really long time, and one major question I might have is, how are these, if you were to have an emergency housing, they'll be located, and now that I learned tonight that a site's been used, the kinds of, the kinds of buildings that would be placed on pavement, are these are, are these mobile, or are these built off-site as large, as units? How, how, can someone maybe enlighten me what they're expecting to see, what people would live in, and how they would be grouped together, and exactly what they might look like, something like that, just, just as a general note? Would you like us to respond?
We are, we do not have any applications or inquiries for a potential housing, transitional housing, or supportive housing, or emergency shelters. This is not to accommodate any applications at this time. It is more to accommodate future applications and where they will be allowed. And that's all we are doing, and we are doing this because the state law requires all cities in California to, to allow these type of facilities in, and be treated the same way as housing is treated by the cities. So that's all that is happening here.
So we don't, we don't have any idea what kind of construction type might be proposed by somebody who would propose such a facility. Whatever they propose, we would review.
And it would go through design review, as the Commissioner Gunkel had mentioned.
Whom would this, whom, to which person would this go, would go through, yourself, or would you be the person?
It would most likely go to the planning commission.
Straight on, thank you very much.
If it's a new building.
Would you please sign in? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Public comment closed?
I'll just say, great job and anything we can do to get on the longer housing element cycle is welcome, so.
So I would move approval.
I would second.
Charlie?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Donaldson, seconded by Commissioner Keller. On the motion, Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly.
Aye.
Commissioner Tan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Moss.
Aye.
Chair Cardoza.
Aye.
Seven ayes. The motion is approved. We will forward this to the city council with your recommendation that it be adopted.
Thanks. Good job.
Through the chair, may I request a two-minute break so the applicant for the next item can put up boards that they have?
Okay, so this is a study session for an FDP application for the hotel in the Bay Street project. If you may recall, the Bay Street PUD, PDP approval happened in 1999. And as part of that PUD approval, it included a 250-room hotel and two retail paths, which were not built as part of the Bay Street development, which contains of retail, entertainment, and residential. So during that time, these two features were not built. One of the retail paths located at the south was built in 2009, and I think some of the commissioners may remember that would be the West Elm Furniture Store. So the second retail pad site at the northwest corner of Christie Avenue and Schelmont Street remains unbuilt. This is an FDP application for the hotel only. So this is Schelmont and these are the railroad tracks. So the site we are, and this is Bay Street Development, and so the site sits right here. And this would be the hotel site, and this would be, the one fronting Schelmont would be the future retail pad that I was speaking to, which is not part of this application. And behind this is the Waken, the famous or the infamous Site B. And we're not talking about Site B today either. In terms of operating characteristics, the hotel would be franchised as a Hyatt Place brand. Ensemble Hotel Partners, which is who are the applicants here, will franchise the Hyatt Place brand from Hyatt and hire a management company to operate the hotel. So the applicant will be only building the project and not managing it or operating it. The target population here for the hotel, business and leisure travelers in Emeryville and the surrounding area. It will be a 24/7 operation and it'll be running throughout the year. It is a 669-room hotel and it includes meeting room, fitness room, an indoor pool, and a bar, cafe area. So this is the site plan. As you can see, this is the hotel site right here. It fronts the railroad tracks here. This is Christie Avenue, Bay Street here. You have Gap here, just to remind you. And the retail pad here is for, as I mentioned again, is not a part of this project. So in terms of how the circulation would work is that auto traffic would enter through here. They can exit around the site. There are some 40-plus parking spaces behind, and they can exit through the second exit and entry here. So there are two entry points and exit points to the hotel. And you can see a roundabout that is to facilitate both the hotel and the future retail development that goes in there. In terms of parking, in addition to this 40-plus parking spaces on the ground level, the remainder parking will be provided in the parking garage on top of the residential apartments which are on this site. So looking at the floor plans itself, Christie Avenue right here, and you have the pool, conference room lobby is here. This is, the one in gray is back of the house, and this is the cafe-bar area. This is a typical second-floor plan. It has 31 rooms as well as a fitness room that is right here, and this would be open to the lobby below. Three-to-six floor plans are mainly typically shown here, and each floor has about 35 rooms, and there are different mix of suite types, which I suppose coincide with what Hyatt Place has in all the other places that they have hotels. This is the rendering of the hotel. I am not going to talk too much about design as one of, we hired a consultant to talk about the design, and Sudhish, and his name is Sudhish Mohindru, some of you may be familiar with him. He will be talking more in detail regarding the proposed design. So I'm going to jump straight into what it, whether the project is in compliant with applicable regulations. So like I mentioned, this is a part of the approved South Bayfront of the Bay Street PUD PDP. And this will sound familiar to you, very similar to the Marketplace study session that we had in December. In order to approve an FDP, the commission must make the finding that the proposed FDP substantially conforms to the PDP. The approval was for a 250-room hotel with a height of up to 200 feet. The approval also allowed a residential unit to be substituted for a hotel room and vice versa. So when the residential component of Bay Street was under construction, they added 29 more units. This they were allowed to do by reducing the size of the hotel. So the maximum hotel size that can be on this site is 221 rooms. However, the proposed hotel is smaller, 169 a room with a height of 69 feet about with a parapet extension of five feet. So clearly, it conforms to the approved PUD and the PDP. And of course, the location of the hotel is also where the PDP showed it to be. One of the conditions of approval of the PUD was to allow sharing of parking with retail users, provided that a parking management plan is submitted. So the applicant would need to demonstrate that and submit a parking management plan when they file a formal application. So at that time, we would be checking whether there is sufficient parking for the proposed use or not, and how that would be managed and operated. This went to the internal DCC meeting, and one of the main comments was that the design needed improvement. And as a result of that comment, that led to us hiring a design consultant, and he will be hearing from him shortly. The other comment was that was noted that the project lies in the pedestrian priority overlay zone, and so the sidewalk width along Christie Avenue would need to meet the 12-foot requirement. There was a concern about the project's impact on the future retail pad and Site B. Suggestion was made to provide, that the applicant provide some form of interim treatment for the retail pad, since at this point, we do not know of any application that are pending or been talked about regarding the retail pad north of the site. It did go to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and they felt that the site was an appropriate area for a car share program, that a bike rental or a bike share facility should be included within the project, and that the number of bicycle parking spaces that they ultimately provide should be twice the city requirement. This increasingly seems to be their standard recommendation on all projects. There was a community meeting that was held on January 7th in the community room at the Bay Street complex. About 15 people were present, as well as Councilmember Davis and some of you were there, including Commissioner Cardoza, Donaldson, Keller, and Tan. One of the comments that was made was the need for a more impressive design, need for treatment for the blank rooftops, such as green roofs. And remainder comments are more outlined in the staff report. In addition to hiring a design consultant to work with the applicant on design itself, we will be hiring two more consultants to do a traffic analysis, which would also include parking analysis, as well as photo simulations for the project so that the commission can see how the proposed project looks in context of other buildings in the surrounding area. The main issues to be considered and from what we need your input from is, well, the design, I'm sure you will be giving us plenty to think about on that sidewalk. Would the commission want to see a 12-foot sidewalk along north side of Christie Avenue between Schelmont Street and the railroad track? And would the commission desire to see an interim treatment for the retail pad as part of this project? And if so, what kind of treatment? So that concludes my portion of presentation. I'm going to invite Sudhish to talk about the design, and after he's done, we will be available for any questions. So Sudhish? So you can just scroll down?
Good evening. Sudhish Mohindru with SCFM Design Studio. We, I reviewed this project, and I'll sort of summarize my comments here. Let me get, one of the, I've structured my comments in sort of the sequence from the larger picture, distant views, and slowly getting down to the street level as you approach the building. And finally, on the surface treatment and design aspects. So starting from the urban design, starting from urban design elements down to, of course, the visual aspects of the project. One thing I think, I don't think many of us need a reminder that the orientation of Christie Avenue, as you come around Powell Street and you make a right turn, sort of a sharp left, a right turn over by Trader Joe's, that turn then shifts in angle, and that's what you're seeing here, as Christie finally ends at this location. And because of that shift in angle, this particular corner of what I consider an incomplete intersection, by intersection I mean intersection of Christie and Bay Street, the southwest corner being occupied by first of the Bay Street buildings, that currently occupies a furniture store, the northeast, sorry, the southeast corner of the building has the Gap store. the Gap store, and of course, the northwest and the northeast corners being vacant. This particular northeast corner is the most visible element as you turn and approach Bay Street. Before you even get, you cannot see, for example, Gap from, even if you, when you're at the traffic light, because of the angle being such. But this building seems like if you keep going straight, you will run right into the building. So I think it's a very prominent sort of iconic location. And I'm saying that because I think I'm basing my comments, I'm basing my comments with that sort of bar that I like to establish for us to judge this by. Now, and so to that effect, I think that the current design does not seem to pay enough attention or reflect the significant character of this particular corner. Now, getting closer to the building, if you, the layout of the ground floor, to me, it seems such that it would be preferable if the more public functions are on the public side. I consider this the public side, because it's going to face, it faces directly across from Gap. It'll face the other retail store. It is the front door of Bay Street, and so it is the most active corner. And so it seems that the meeting rooms, and the restrooms, and the meeting rooms, and the swimming pool, those tend to be a more private function of the hotel. So if you're a regular shopper, you're really not interested in that. While the café, that is being shown further north, and perhaps a bar, I'm not sure if there's a bar or not, but that has, there's a tremendous opportunity of that being located at the corner. So maybe some sort of a switching of the plan where some of the less public functions are moved north, and the more public functions are moved south, it would really treat this hotel more as an urban, in an urban context, rather than a freestanding hotel that you would normally find around a parking lot. So I think the plan definitely can help, and which will get directly reflected in the elevation, because the public functions require more glass. The, let's see here. So if you look at this, that's what I meant, that these to me are more private functions, special events and so on, and that is a more public function. The corner of the building has, as it turns out, I think we have wonderful opportunity to treat the corner in a special way. It does seem to, my understanding, there are suites on every floor at this corner, and it would be really nice if we, if the corner was designed in such a way that it was more like a lit beacon, so that it highlights the prominence and sort of the entry point to Bay Street. In terms of overall design, I'll summarize by saying that something stood out to me as worth mentioning, that there is a certain horizontality that you see here in the windows, particularly, and like here, for example, which to me is not as appropriate as a more elegant vertical appearance, which is what you have at the rest of the Bay Street. So not speaking stylistically at all, but regardless of whether you have a traditional design or you have a modern design, but there's some fundamental elements. The vertical windows tend to be more related with an urban environment, and more dense environment, as opposed to the horizontal related to more of a sort of a prairie-like, stretching-out environment. And I think so this is something that can be used to our advantage, to fit in with the rest of the complex and make this a real, real special place that is contextually connected with all the activity that's around there. The general comment about the exterior treatment, I think best way to summarize it, because I'm running out of my time, I don't want to take too much time, is that the design seems to, there doesn't seem to be much of a hierarchy in the various elements. And it seems that the elements are sort of stuck on, and they don't quite complete themselves. You don't quite know why the corner element, for example, is having to compete with this element here. So there's a confusion, well, which is the more prominent? Are they two different buildings, or is it this more prominent or that? There are other examples of Hyatt Place Hotels, and I believe Miami is one example that comes to my mind, where they have very cleverly used the Hyatt icon, which is this sort of sloping, at the corner itself in one of the hotels in downtown Miami. So I think that the, what I would say simply is that the elevations should be designed in such a way that instead of appearing like there's various things happening somewhat haphazardly, there should be a hierarchy of strong elements, and then other simple repetitive elements. So that way, they're not competing with each other. And of course, the street level will automatically, once the plan is organized, the street level will express itself in terms of where the glass is and where the solid elements are. So, Miro, is there anything else? Did I leave anything out, or? I think I've covered everything. Thank you very much.
Would the applicant like to speak now?
Let's see. Bring mine up here. This one. Perfect. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Conrad Garner with Ensemble Hotel Partners, and we're very excited to be here tonight and have the opportunity to speak to you about this hotel that we look forward to bringing into Emeryville. We understand it's been quite some time since a new hotel's been developed in the city. This is part of an overall general plan that was, as she said, 1999, so 15 years in the making. And we think this is a great site and a great market to be coming into. So again, we're excited to be here. I want to go through the design. I wasn't quite sure how much the staff report would cover some of the items, so some of it'll be duplicate, and I'll move through that quickly and focus on responding to some of Sudhish's comments, if that works for everybody. Just to give a brief history, we're new to the Emeryville city, so as a way of introduction, a little bit about our company. We're over 30 years in the real estate development business, with a long history in hotels. Currently, we have a portfolio of about 1,000 guest rooms. We own and have developed Marriott's and Hilton's, and this would be a venture into the Hyatt Place, but we're familiar with all the brands and the management companies. As Miro mentioned, we're not an operator by trade. We are a developer and an owner, so this would be a franchise, as she outlined. We pride ourselves on quality buildings. We are not a short-term flip developer. All of the properties we've developed since 2009, and the hotels that we started buying back in the early 2000s, we still own. We take a lot of pride in continuing to evolve those and building something that we want to hold on to ourselves. So we plan to do that again here in Emeryville. Just a very quick, this is a Residence Inn by Marriott that we built down in Long Beach, California. One of our offices is in Long Beach. We have two offices in LA and another in Phoenix. This was a Marriott product. This is their extended stay brand, very successful and very proud of this property. This is a Courtyard by Marriott, which is actually a competitor to the Hyatt Place brand. This is in Philadelphia and just opened two weeks ago. It was minus three with the wind chill when it opened, so a little different environment, but we are very excited about this and want to take some of the things we've learned with this select-service hotel type and apply it here in Emeryville to continue to build a better hotel. So we're here to talk about this hotel, and I want to quickly touch on the program. It was 169 originally, as that was submitted back in December. We've continued to refine a few things in the building, and the key count, we call them keys, or guest rooms, has gone up by two to 171. It's six stories tall. Hyatt has a café, and I think it's important that we classify it as a café. It's not a restaurant. It's not a bar. It is a bistro-cafe experience. We'll have one meeting room, 900 square feet, an indoor pool, and an outdoor patio that I'm going to focus on a bit farther. I don't need to go through this much, it was already covered. Our intention is to develop this within the development agreement that's in place, to operate within the PDP allowances, and build what this site is owned for, and get it done efficiently. So I do want to spend a few minutes talking about the brand, because I think it's important to understand what's going to happen on the inside of this building, and then relate that to how the building looks on the outside. So the Hyatt Place brand is in the select-service industry market of the hospitality industry. This is Hyatt's brand family. You can see the Park Hyatt, Hyatt Regency, Hyatt Place, at 167 hotels today. Hyatt is very proud of this brand and aggressively trying to grow it. This is a map, I'll jump to this one, of their growth plan. It's a little bit historic, but this was their plan they outlawed in 2006, and they have tracked to 167. You can see that it's focused in large urban areas, and that would be Emeryville, and it's a missing factor here. This is their competitive landscape, so two of these are already in Emeryville, Courtyard and Hilton Garden Inn. And Hyatt Place really strives to come in at one notch higher than these brands and compete at their level, while also providing a bit of refinement in the architecture and the experience indoors. But that is their direct competition. You can see by the number of hotels developed today, they've got catching up to do, and they're working on that. This is just some imagery from the prototype of a guest room. It is a contemporary design, a lot of earth tones. We don't get much flexibility in the rooms to mess around with this. This is the Hyatt brand, and we'll be implementing their brand standards. These are just, again, quick shots. This is what we call a queen-queen, so the two bedrooms. All of the room ties have a nice feature of a little sitting area towards the front of the room. Gives it a sweet feel, while it's not a sweet product, gives it a sweet feel. Again, stand-up glass showers, a desk, credenza, and TV function that provides for the leisure guests as well as the business guests, which both would be frequenting this hotel in Emeryville. Went through this, I know with Miro, this is the site off Shellmont. We have quite a few constraints on the site, with the railroad tracks to the east being part of the mixed-use development of Bay Street, and working off of the proposed easement between the retail pad and the hotel pad. Some site photos for context, right now it's vacant. This is a shot from Christie. This again is just a site plan which everybody was familiar with. I think it's important, too, just to reiterate, that the hotel is going to be responsible for the one-acre parcel that is shown in color there. The rest of it is outside of our control. We are under contract with Madison Marquette to buy that parcel and develop it. They will be building the roundabout, whether it stays a roundabout or some other shape of an easement, and our hotel will marry up to that once it gets developed. Just to touch on parking, the PDP allows for the shared parking, and we plan to take advantage of that. We're all for reducing the car impact. This is, the green is a rough path of travel that we would try to incorporate. A guest would pull up to the Forte Cassier front entry and have the ability to pull right around into some short-term, potentially close to the lobby, but then regular parking, 42 spaces on-site, if none were vacant, they could come down farther east on the site and take a left out onto Christie and go up into the second-floor parking garage, in which we have a reciprocal agreement with Madison for 100 dedicated hotel spaces. There's been a little bit of traffic study in the past, and this entrance is the lowest use for the retail center. It's only got 17% of the entry traffic to Bay Street comes in and out of this Christie entrance, and 23% of the exit traffic. So we plan to not impact that too much. So getting into the design, the ground floor is where we incorporate a series of public spaces required by the brand, along with all the function of the back-of-house laundry service. We have worked this floor plan through the Hyatt Architecture and Construction Review and received approval. Hyatt has bought off on this and approved this through their franchise board, and we're pretty excited about it. It organizes the space in which it provides privacy to those going to the pool, because you can come down the elevators here and never have to cross into any of the public traffic, the lobby or anything, and head into the pool. Some people don't want to be on display. And then we have the café operation on the front of the hotel. This is a buffet line that gets opened up in the morning, backs up to the kitchen. That's an adjacency requirement, that that be immediately behind the food service. This is your check-in, the bar down to the side. That bar is where you could have a coffee, a pastry, or they do sell some alcoholic drinks there. Meeting room. And this is a plaza, a patio that we've developed, and I'll hit on that in a little bit. Typical floor again, 35 guest rooms per floor, suites in the corner, as was talked about. These are also considered suites. These are King Studios, they call them. They're a slightly modified version of the typical King, and are liked by the guests. So this is our main rendering from the intersection of the Bay Street extension and Christie. The hotel is oriented in this manner for a number of reasons. There's a lot of things to take into account when we're designing a hotel. This site has a lot of context, one being the railroad track. We needed to pull as much of this building away from the railroad track as we could, and so that has put a lot of it up on the front. We also made an effort to respect the future development of site B, and located a skinny edge, thin edge, non-impacting to that future development along the property line to the north. We actually feel that this is a pretty good urban statement, to have the building edge up against the street. A lot of the current hotels in the market have a sea of parking between them and the street, and that's pretty anti-urban. So this is more in keeping with that mixed-use feel, the retail feel of Bay Street, and allowing the hotel to go more vertical at the street front. Just to walk through our design intent here, the green tower element, which we feel needs to be strong as well, and we like the design we have today, in that it highlights a lot of glass. Our suites at this corner will have incredible daylight and great views down Bay Street. This would be a metal panel system. We have a plaster system on the white areas. The red is intended to be a rustified masonry stone product of some sort. We have some examples of items we're considering today, but it would be an accent material. A lot of glass. This is a signature element by Hyatt. This is a brand standard. There are some cases nationwide where they've granted variances. They are rare. They do try to have this built. This is like the Best Buy wedge. They want this to be their icon. So we've located it right at the front door per their prototype. On the ground floor, we're trying to create a base. You drive under this property twice to access the parking in the back, so the base is important. We have a variety of texture and stone elements. The front would have natural stone on it, the orange burnt color here. We're contemplating either a metal system or potentially a engineered wood system there, and it wraps around the building, that you can see as we go down Christie. and it wraps around the building, that you can see as we go down Christie. It's an element that flows throughout the base. This is a rendering from the northeast, looking at the property. We have a low roof in which we don't intend to put any equipment on and actually decorate it with a pattern. That's some of the public space and back-of-house sticks out underneath the tower. The guest rooms on this side are facing east, facing toward the railroad tracks, and we've continued the pattern of color and plaster and accent elements around to that side. We do intend to build some screening to the railroad track to provide knockdown of the noise and some visual elements. It would have landscaping on both sides of that wall. So just some key points on our design, the richness of the material and the color palette, you know, we're trying to come in without that, with a design that is elevated up to a certain level already. We've got less than the typical stucco box. We're introducing the material mixture and colors that we feel works within the context of the Bay Street. We've tried to provide a corner presence and a response to the site characteristics of the railroad track and neighbors, and we need to create that identity. We want people to see the hotel as they come around from Trader Joe's, too, and be able to identify from a distance. This is a quick exhibit in which we studied the height of the hotel and how it fits within the context of the Bay Street current development. You have, of course, the retail on the ground floor, parking, and then you have multifamily up above. A lot of variety of colors and textures and moves within the Bay Street complex, where you're trying to come in with a contemporary design but yet have a variety of color and texture ourselves and fit within. This is a zoomed-out elevation height context. To put it in perspective, this is our hotel, Bay Street, Site B, the Powell Overpass, and then over here we've shown the Hyatt house, and in the background, the terraces condo project. So show relation of how close things are together and heights for the entire section. This is a study on the view impact. We understand, we know that there's condo properties here, and trying to look at how we would be impacting the view, guessing the view is looking towards the San Francisco skyline. The reality is, is our site is mostly out of the view corridor, maybe a smidgen here, but the big impact is obviously going to be whatever's built in Site B. And you already have some visual elements via the courtyard, the office tower here, the Hilton Garden Inn, and the four points, frankly, right in the front here, that are more in the cone of view than our property tends to be. So this outdoor patio, we specifically pulled the building back at this corner to engage the corner, to give this hotel a street pedestrian presence. There's obviously a lot of pedestrian activity along the Bay Street and the retail center. We want to participate in that and give our guests, as well as the general public, the ability to come and use our services, enjoy an outdoor experience. This is on the southwest corner, it's great daylight. And out there, we plan to have upgraded patio, fire pits, and some dining so that anybody can sit on this corner and dine and activate it. Sorry, these are just a couple imagery, some of the fire pits we're contemplating, some of the patio design. You know, we have a public art requirement of 1% in the PDP, and of course we'll be meeting that. We do think there's an opportunity to do something here at this corner. There may be an opportunity to run up this wall and do some tall vertical art piece, maybe it's an installation at the patio level, but we think this corner is a place that can highlight it and allow outside guests, as well as those staying at the hotel, to appreciate it. Yeah, this was my last slide. You know, just to quickly, we did have a good, what we thought was a good community meeting back earlier this month. We heard good constructive criticism about the project. We've tried to respond to those comments and look forward to hearing from the commission tonight about your thoughts on this property. That's pretty much the presentation. We have the architect with us here today, too. Both him and I can answer questions on it. Thank you. I think I'll put this back up so you can see it.
Now open the meeting to public comment. Please identify yourself and sign in afterwards.
Sure, okay. Hi, I'm Bobby Lee. I'm a homeowner in Bay Street condominium project. I was in attendance at the community meeting as well, and I appreciate everybody's time for coming out and presenting all this information to the residents. There are a number of concerns that were brought up that I'd like to also, again, reiterate and share with the commission. Design, that building corner was a huge, huge part of that conversation during that meeting. The problem that, I live on this end, on the hotel end of Bay Street, and the problem is when you look down Bay Street, as a pedestrian and as a homeowner, you're kind of struck with this kind of shunted corner where it's kind of makes you look away, or you're kind of looking straight at a flat red wall or glass. And it just, there could be more that could be done. As Sadiq mentioned, it's a very important corner, and I think there's more that could be done to integrate that. Let's see, there's also a traffic concern as well that I brought up. Coming into the complex, coming up from Christie, there isn't a left turn pocket to turn into the front area of the hotel, and right now, given the way that traffic moves in to the complex in surges, it just takes one car to kind of trip up that whole flow, to stop traffic and have that back up into Shellmount. Another concern was security. There's a public area here on the outside, so there's parking in that kind of cul-de-sac area. Whose responsibility is it to, you know, police loitering, overnight noise, things like that from the area, which I don't anticipate, but if there is, who would be taking a look at that? And also, finally, as a resident, you know, I'm concerned about construction noise and scheduling, and developers have done a great job kind of describing some of those concerns or alleviating some of those concerns, but as we look at design changes and changes to the way that this hotel is shown or constructed, I wonder if we can keep that in consideration. There's a number of us do work out of our houses, out of our condos and in apartments as well, and construction noise is a big issue. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Tito Young, and this is actually the first time I actually got to look at this design. I actually had the flu during the first group there when you guys presented it before. So you're kind of getting fresh eyes from this, and to all due respect, I have, I feel the building kind of misses the spirit of Emeryville a lot. The corner, that diagonal thing, whether it belongs to Hyatt or Disneyland or whoever you want to belong to, it just, it just doesn't work. And we have an area here that's really special. It's kind of a, it has a long history to it. There's a lot of people that's been in this area, has been in and out of this area. The Peralta's from way back in the 1800s, early 1800s, and then before them. This area was also used to build during World War II. Bits and pieces of what basically made the United States today, or whatever we want to call that. But this project is, if I was to look at this a little, I think it'd be nice to make it a little bit more grander. That ground floor could be a little higher, maybe work for a little, stage it up a little higher than its lane. And then if you're going to have a public space, outdoor space that's out there like that, it's just, it seems like there's 10 seats. And if you know Emeryville, it really does get very full, and there's a lot of people here, and there's a lot of people that would really like to use this space, so why not lift the entire building, kind of like what maybe Corbusier would do, and lift the whole building up over the whole thing? Make the whole ground floor accessible except for a few areas, and bring something rich and enduring. Sure, sure, you're trying to stay with a height line, but I think it'd be nice to give one floor above the height line of the rest of these buildings by a little bit to kind of emphasize the verticality of it. The gentleman who made the remarks in terms of the feeling of the facades and how they're actually composed together, to me, I agree with him. The facades look a little, they miss the windows and the subtractive and the additive spaces just, there's some elements that just don't add up. I like the idea that there's a 1% for the art, and I think that's really great, and I do like the concept of the vertical red wall, but you know, if there was something really beautiful there, that'd be great. It'd be nice to have something on a couple other sides, too, that actually looks great from the opposite side of the building, from where I live, the terraces. So I just, I think, I just want to ask this group, the group of commissioners, to really think about letting a project like this go a little further with a little bit more thought on what the facades are going to look like. I do understand, thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Why, the meeting closed? Should we start on the left?
Wow, I get to start tonight. Well, I think overall, it's a great job, and I really do support the project. I'd love to see something built on, continue to build on that area of Bay Street so we can kind of finish off that cap. I really agree. Charlie, have you ever had a design studio do an evaluation like this? I think that was really valuable.
Occasionally. You may recall, for the paper mill, we had a different consultant critique the design. Of course, I was before you arrived.
I think it's an investment that's well worth it. I agree with a lot of what he'd said, and I'll get down to that in a few minutes. First of all, I love the idea of shared parking. I think that's something that we really need to do more of, so I'm really behind the whole parking scheme. The only thing I'd like to know is if you guys are planning to do some wayfinding signs so people know where to go so they're not wandering around trying to figure that out. So I just recommend that there's direct access and direct information on how people get to that place. The wide sidewalks, Charlie, I'm kind of having a hard time understanding where this sidewalk that the DCC and the Bike Ped group was talking about, is it on the south facade of the hotel that they want a 12-foot walkway?
Right.
Okay. And knowing my living relationship and who I live with is going to kill me if I say we have shorter sidewalks, but I see that as more as an access sidewalk than, you know, an actual, someplace you would stroll to window shop or something. So if the sidewalk wasn't 12 feet, I'm not really objectionable to that?
I think they were also referring to the extension of that sidewalk out to Shellmount Street, which would go past the future retail pad.
But that's up to the future retail pad, not up to this project?
Well, we feel that that sidewalk should be put in there now so that there's a continuous pedestrian.
Okay, well, that area, I think the room is there and there's nothing built or planned. Put in a 12-foot sidewalk there. Along the building, it looks really tight, and I'd really not like it, you know, to affect the building if it ended up being eight foot, but that's just my opinion. Let's see. Yeah, I think that the whole thing on the bike share, I don't think the East Bay is actually ready for that yet. I definitely support that. I'm a member of Bike Share in San Francisco, but when we do bring that to the East Bay, I think we need to concentrate on partnering with the existing group that's in San Francisco and the peninsula, that we don't create a new competition for that, but we work very closely. I've recommended that with UC Berkeley, they're looking at that as well. And I'm fine with the total of 20 bike parking, I think that's quite a few. I don't know that we need to double that, but that's just my opinion as a biker. I don't know that we need 40 spaces. I definitely support a shuttle service, I would like to see them do that. And the site there, there was some interim issues to be considered in the site of west of this. The other site parcel, does that belong to Madison Marquette?
Which, the retail pad?
What's that?
The retail pad, yes.
Yes, yeah. I don't believe that, other than if you want to, you know, have them put in the sidewalk, I don't believe the onus should be on this project to clean up someone else's site and maintain it. I think we need to start putting a little more pressure on Madison Marquette. I'm reading the interim thing. Does the commission desire to see the interim treatment of the retail pad in Site B as part of the project? If so, what kind of treatment? I think we do need to clean that lot up, but I think it should be Madison Marquette's responsibility and not this developer's. This isn't his property. And as far as the design studios, I agree with the parking that he'd suggested. They should enter the property from the forward or first entry, but the rear entry should be exit-only. I don't believe we need traffic going in both ways and causing more problems making two left turns. I'd also like to see if it's possible to put any turn pocket, because as the resident said, I do see that that's a really short block from the intersection of Shellmount into the property, and if someone is turning left into the hotel, it's going to back people up into the Shellmount intersection. So I'd like to see if it's possible to rework that street so we could put in a left pocket. You look puzzled, Charlie.
No, I agree. I hear what you're saying.
Okay. And let's see. Now, the ground floor, I see what the studio is talking about, about moving that feature of the restaurant and everything up to that corner. Looking at the layout, especially the delivery dock and everything, is that something that's even possible with the back-of-house, or is that going to really cause a lot of problems?
It would cause some challenges. This is the site plan for the ground floor. Yeah, it would, and, you know, we feel like this already provides activation on this corner, and reality, you know, a meeting can turn into a pretty public function, and I don't think having this use in this location will inhibit our facade at all on this side. We will still have the glass, there will still be entrance and glass on the front. The other thing to balance is, there are quite a few guest profiles that don't want to be on display, per se, along that very busy retail front as they stay at the hotel and eat breakfast. So we try to balance between those who want to go to the public side and those who don't.
So was it possible to, on the inside portion of the lobby where you have some seating areas, is it possible to open that up more to the patio and put more inviting seating in that area? Do you see where I'm talking about, just outside the meeting room?
Here.
Yeah, that area there? Is it possible to open that up more to the patio and create more interaction and make it more friendly?
Well, we intend, the cursor, there we go, we intend to have these as doors.
But I see only one door on the actual lobby side, yeah, right in that area. I only see one door. Could you do like bifold doors, something that would open that up a little more?
Yeah, we absolutely want to be able to open this meeting room and allow a function or some sort of.
Well, not consultants about the meeting room, but the lobby.
The lobby, this zone.
I don't see a meeting room as public space, that's a private party or whatever happening in there, but the lobby is, you're trying to convey that as public space, so I'd like to see that more open and welcoming. And the other furniture arrangement allowing for that to, more interaction and things. If it's not possible, because I do like the loading dock way back where it is and out of sight, and is that also where the trash pickup would be?
Yeah, we're going to move trash. We drawn it down here, but talking with Public Works and the Waste Department, it will likely move over into the loading zone.
Okay, yeah, I'd like that as out of sight as possible. And so that's, I really agreed with his idea of making that more the public area, but looking at the back-of-house, I really saw some complications in that area, so, but in making that a little bit more user-friendly, I think that would be good. I do believe, as everyone has said, I think you guys did an admirable job of the corner. I do believe that it can be better. I think maybe moving the iconic slanted roof in that area, as he said, you know, in Miami they've done that or something, but I think everybody's asking for that to be a little bit more predominant. It looks nice, but it just looks nice, and I think we could do a lot more with that. The building does look rather suburban, and it does have that Emeryville vernacular that we didn't choose, and I would like to see if you're going to have all these colors, maybe take out one color. I like the idea that you're using other finishes such as the steel and the metal, but it's still having that, to me, these buildings that we build in town remind me of the Cindy Comics. It's just all these, we're using articulation and color as architectural features, and it's really not. And I think what we're trying to move towards is something more stylistic, something, it could be even more simple. Simple is nice sometimes, it doesn't have to be articulated to be good architecture. So that I would like to see. I think the major hurdle in that same subject is coexisting with the Bay Street architecture that's already there. I don't know that we did a really good job with the metropolitan apartment buildings that are above Gap, so I know, I see that as we need to coexist with that, so I understand that as a hurdle. And the art piece, I would just hope that whatever we do, it doesn't look like it's an afterthought or something we stuck on. I like the idea of maybe treating that red wall with a piece of artwork, but I'd really like to make sure it's a feature wall and not just an afterthought or something we just kind of stuck on as ornamentation. I hadn't thought of it, but a larger base could be nice if we added a couple more feet to that lobby area and maybe opened the whole thing. I know you probably haven't looked at that, and I know that there's costs involved in that, but it's kind of nice if you had a lobby that was maybe 11 feet.
Well, the lobby, just. Well, the lobby, just, if I might, just real quick, lobby does have a two-story height area as you walk in. This is, it's not dashed in on this plan, but—
Right. You can see it on the entry there.
You can see it on the entry here, excuse me, sorry. Yes, right here.
So maybe if the whole front looked like that, or if you just elevated the second floor up 11 feet or something. It's just an idea. It wasn't something I thought of before, but after hearing that, I thought, well, it could kind of give that a stronger base and a bit of—
The ground floor is— Yeah. Yeah, that's, this is, drive underneath it twice. Just to clarify, the ground floor ceiling outside of this atrium will probably be in the 12-foot range.
Okay. Well, maybe unify it along the whole front to give it that whole presence.
Yeah, as much size as we possibly can. We're going to, we're going to provide 13/6 clear for the fire truck to drive through here.
Okay. And I think that's all I have. In case I forget, well, I'll just chime up at the end.
Okay. I also appreciate the consultant coming in. Thank you very much. I agreed with a lot of what he said. I think that this building is very suburban in nature. The fenestration is very horizontal. It does not have hierarchy, and therefore it is confused, and the entrance does not have a ascending feeling in any way. It seems quite drunken down and squatty, and relatively bland, actually, in my opinion. So it's not, this is not looking urban. It looks like Office Park, basically, is what I'm, what I'm, what I'm reading here. And we want this to be an urban center, so there are things that need to be done. I also agree about the corner needing to be more iconic. I think that would be the opportunity for the wedge, is, it seems like a good one there. I don't really understand. Well, not, no, I do understand. But I also agree that the, the corner, the Christie and Shellmount corner could be more of a public space, more activated. I don't know if a few tables and a fire pit's going to do it. You actually need, I think that's where the restaurant and bar need to be, in that corner. I realize there's issues with food prep, et cetera, but I'm sure that can be resolved somehow. The, the roof going out the first floor is, I guess you said you were going to have some kind of color treatment along the—
Yeah, the low roof?
The low roof.
Correct, yeah.
That's better than nothing. So there will be no equipment there?
There's what?
No equipment?
No.
Okay. Great if it was something that folks would look down on and wouldn't, yeah, would not be an eyesore at least. And I definitely love the shared parking. I think that's one of the highlights of the project. And I am a little concerned about people entering and exiting off that south side. I'm not sure how that's going to work and what, you said there was 17% of the traffic from Bay Street goes in there?
Yeah, it's the least utilized as far as entry to the retail center. We are doing a circulation study to address this, and we have the same concern. We don't want to have confusion on how this operates, and I know Charlie and Muriel are commissioning a study right now to figure out how the best circulation goes, so.
So have you bought the property yet? Has it been sold?
We're under contract. We'll—
So I have a little, this is in regards to sidewalks and street, a little thing that I want to bring up. So on the south side of the, of Christie Avenue is the Bay Street project, and I'm sure everyone's walked to that little corner there, coming from Shellmount, and it's awful. And it's, you couldn't even, I don't even know if you can get a wheelchair through there. Honestly, I'm not sure.
Which corner? Sorry.
Pretty, so it's the southeast, wait, is that correct?
North.
Southeast corner of Christie and—
Shellmount.
Shellmount.
Take your point right there.
Southeast.
And at the corner of the building there, too.
At the corner of Bay Street. So it's not, it's not your property, but it is, you are in that intersection, okay? Or the retail pod will be, so the retail pod will, in front, will be also, it's, will be next to that intersection, and you are behind it, or to the east of it. So the problem in, going forward in the future is if we were ever to make that sidewalk on the, on the south side wider, we would need to ever so slightly jog Christie Avenue, and that would affect the retail pod and might affect your front southwest corner of your project. Does that, is anyone following me? Are you, Charlie, do you have any?
You're talking about that very narrow sidewalk that's along Shellmount, and then when you get to that corner, you're talking about if that corner gets improved in the future, it's going to change the vantage point.
It's going to change the width of the street, because obviously the building's already there. So here's our, here's our one chance. The retail pod in front, or pad, is not created yet, and here you guys are. And I want to make sure that that intersection is usable for pedestrians, because that is a future, well-used pedestrian intersection, as well as it is now. And so I'm not really certain what needs to happen, and if there's a traffic study that needs to be done and that needs to be included, does that—
Well, we can ask our traffic consultant to look at that.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the distance between the edge of the building and the curb.
You come down into Bay Street a little more, right in through there. It's very tight right in through there.
Right in through there, yes.
It's very bad.
So it's basically, it's between the retail pad and the Bay Street is the real issue, but it may affect ever so slightly that southwest corner of your property if we do so. That is, that's a big issue, and that needs to be looked at, because it's a problem, and we don't want to make that problem going forward. That being said, on the south, your south side of the property, where we're looking at needing possibly 12-foot sidewalks, I don't necessarily know that that's necessary because, I don't think it is necessary, because no one's walking, hardly anyone's walking into the parking garage. It's mostly going to be going across to Bay Street, back and forth. The frontage along the Bay Street side, it's going south, north to south, that should be a nice sidewalk, though, because that is the future development. So that would be my take on that. And I do, I'm concerned about the, making the turn into the, you know, into the parking circle, and do we need to have a left turn pocket? I'm not sure. So more verticality, more urban nature, less, it's very confused. It's very, it's like a whole bunch of stuff tacked on, and it reads really squatty, and I think it could be the fenestration and the entire, the whole thing could be more elegant in its aesthetic.
Would you mind if I asked, when you say urban, are there images, or what do you mean by more urban in your mind?
So this is very, I think Mr. Sudeesh said, this is, this has a lot of horizontality to it. It's very prairie, very, you know, suburban, right? You drive, you park in the big parking lot, you get out, everything's kind of spread out everywhere. Here we are, we're a little over one square mile. We want to see more vertical, more elevated. It's very tight. We have Bay Street on one side, a future who knows what on the other. And I think having more ascending character to this, to this project would make it a better experience aesthetically. That's, does that—
Yeah, no, that is, yeah, yeah, I understand. I mean, fortunately with this side, the limitation has been, we can't, we can't build over here or over here. So I actually think it's urban having the edge on the street and hiding the parking back behind a suburban—
Oh, I like that, too.
—model might be more in front, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if we're even, the simplest thing we could talk about would be just the surface treatments could be better. I'm not talking about, you could raise the building up. I'm not sure, actually, if you could, but—
Not really.
Yeah, you're at the max.
Yeah.
But the surface treatment of, basically, you look at the fenestration, it's very square, if not, it's kind of a little off-square, so, no, it's pretty much square.
You know, one thing, one thing to note, if I could respond just briefly, unfortunately, the renderings don't show it that well, but in these window zones, the way this works is there's a vertical glass here, there's a window, then there's a metal panel in which the air conditioning units are all self-sufficient, sit inside the room. That's going to be pushed back. We're going to get much more shadow line than is shown here today in this rendering. It was just left out on this one, but that may help give some more vertical as you see the shadows pick up on your, on your vertical lines of those windows, is a thought.
Can I just ask a question of protocol? I mean, are we, are we asking questions of the presenter, or, I mean, right now, we're doing a back and forth, and is that, is that what we're—
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're giving your comments. You're giving your opinions.
We're also getting the, sort of, the responses at this time.
Right. It's a dialogue.
Okay.
That's fine. This is a noticed public meeting, so feel free to express your opinions as much as you wish.
I think if I just pipe out, and what she's saying about urban, and I agree that not having the parking and having the building there, I think it's the interaction of the base of the building with the people on the street, and again, what you're talking about with the vents of the air conditioning, I think that just adds to brick it up again. And I think the base is too broken up. I think to be more urban is to be more unified, more simplified, and if you could do that, and then—
And pedestrian—
Friendly.
Friendly.
Yeah.
Pedestrian, attractive, pedestrian—
Engaging.
Engaging.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I really wish you had done a rendering of the corner of Christie and Shellmount, seeing that corner of the building, and maybe in future renderings, that would—
Christie and Shellmount?
Yeah, so looking northeast.
So farther distance away, looking at it?
This is, this is basically standing at Christie and Shellmount.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, down Bay Street, you mean?
No, well, this is standing along—
This is, this is basically—
This is standing along—
Any right here.
—Shellmount here.
In this way.
Is that right?
No, it's on Christie.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay, no, you're right.
But the majority of people that see it are going to be driving down, they're going to be more in the middle of that intersection that's up, yeah, up there looking at it from that angle.
Looking at it. Because of the way traffic is routed off the freeway, you, it's—
Right.
—very focused that direction, as opposed to anyway, yeah. That's it for now.
Before I give my comments, I have a few questions for staff. The, in the, so in the, what is it, the Shellmount Street Design Guidelines, is that the—
Right.
—the thing that requires the 12-foot sidewalks? Within that 12 feet, are there, are there different zones established, or is it just 12 feet, or is there like, is there a place where you're supposed to put street furniture and another place where you're supposed to have a path of travel and that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, there's, actually, I believe we were looking at the pedestrian priority zone of the general plan and referencing the citywide design guidelines for pedestrian priority zones. But I believe it's eight feet of clear pedestrian pathway and four feet of planter zone between the pathway, pedestrian pathway and the curb.
Okay.
There's a, there's a cross section in the, in the design guidelines that shows how it's supposed to be laid out.
Okay. And then the parking, so there is excess parking at Bay Street that, I mean, was that part of previous entitlements or that?
Well, that will be part of the traffic study to determine whether or not there is sufficient excess parking.
But the, so what was, when Bay Street was constructed, the parking requirement was based on what?
It was based on the zoning regulations that were in effect at the time.
Okay.
But there's also a condition of approval on the Bay Street PUD that says a shared parking arrangement can be considered if, you know, there's sufficient parking available and a parking management plan is put in place.
Okay. And then what, what is the requirement for bike parking? I see they have 10 long-term spaces located in the back, but what is, and I assume that meets the requirement, but what's the short-term parking, bike parking requirement?
Short-term and long-term bike parking are the same, and they're dependent on the required auto parking. So it is one, if I remember correctly, it's one per 10 auto parking spaces. So one bicycle space for every 10 required auto parking spaces for both long-term and short-term.
Okay. So are they, so when the bike parking then is calculated based on the auto parking, are they required to take into account the 100 spaces that are, that they're sharing, or—
Yes, I would, that's the way I would interpret that, because that is what they're being provided, whether it's shared or not is immaterial. It is in context with how much, you know, how much traffic there is going to be to the site, not where it's being provided.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, so I have some comments. So I want to actually emphatically agree with everything that Commissioner Kumari said, which allows me to focus on some other things. So I do, I love, I mean, not that we're really discussing that, because it's already approved, but I love the use of the project. I think this is a great, great location for a hotel. It's where, you know, it's where I would probably want to stay if I came to Emeryville. And, you know, the retail pad location looks good, but that said, I have a lot of concerns about the site plan and about the, the architecture. So first, my first concern about the site plan is that I think this, these two sites together have a really great opportunity to, to put a really strong end cap on Bay Street and to really make that an important feature. I think, you know, the, the view, that there's a huge view corridor down Bay Street. I think a lot of people tend to start at the other end of Bay Street and walk down it towards this direction. And there's, I think there's a huge opportunity to create a really great outdoor space there, and it's disappointing to me that we've instead just used it as access and turned it into a big drop-off roundabout. And also, I have some concerns about how the roundabout is positioned. I think, it seems to me like the retail pad, you know, may or may not utilize the roundabout. They probably don't need that as a drop-off, you know, depending on what that future user is. It seems to me that most, you know, most retail establishments would function just fine with the, you know, really the one major accessible street foundation along Christie, and then the other one, you know, not very accessible but great for visibility along Shellmount. And I'm concerned that you've placed, while you've taken more than half of the, of this roundabout, you've positioned it in such a way that it really leaves an odd-shaped retail pad left over, and I'm really concerned with the usability of that, that retail space. So I would really encourage you to look at, you know, sort of look at the totality of the site plan and the layout and see if there's a better way to do that rather than sort of pushing the problem onto, onto somebody else. I'm going to, I'm going to propose an idea. I've heard a couple other commissioners say that they weren't really concerned about the 12-foot sidewalk south of, or I guess, it's not really south, it's whatever, east of Bay Street, yeah. And I would tend to agree, however, I am going to propose an idea, which is that we sort of require as much space as a 12-foot sidewalk and then identify, or at least, you know, at least for half of that area, require as much space as a 12-foot sidewalk, and then identify that as a future space for future Bike Share pod when that, because inevitably that system that's being implemented now in San Francisco and in the South Bay, the same system will, will be expanded to the East Bay, and I think that would be a perfect location for it. I mean, Bay Street is obviously going to need one, and I think that would be a perfect location for it. And I would also stress that I think the bike parking, I think we all know that Bay Street doesn't have enough bike parking existing. Street doesn't have enough bike parking existing, and so I think the bike parking needs to be located along Christie somewhere, but definitely near the, definitely near the front of the building. I think as close to Bay Street as possible. I think that's where it's going to be best utilized. I'm really less concerned about hotel guests having bike storage, because they're, you know, although I have taken my bike with me when I've stayed in a hotel before and not had a place to lock it up, I don't think that's a common problem. I'm more concerned about providing additional bike parking for existing Bay Street patrons. And then, building height, I think you've heard, well, I'm just going to say, the building height is not really an issue to me. I'm not, I understand that you've tried to make it the same height as everything else. I don't think, I don't sense that we're really super concerned about that. So if that gives you some flexibility to do other things, I think we might be willing to entertain an increased height. I mean, it's clear you're not maxing out the height that you're allowed already, so that's just food for thought. I'll just talk a little bit about the architecture. To me, it doesn't look like an office building, it looks like a hospital, actually. It looks like, I think you could just put Kaiser Permanente on it, and you'd be, and put curtain dividers in the rooms, and you'd be good to go, because you already got your ambulance drop-off, too. So, that said, I'm not really sure what to do about it. I mean, it's funny, the, I think the little mini shed roof thing is actually probably one of the most interesting aspects of the building. And I don't, you know, sitting here, I just started thinking, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe that's because the rest of the building isn't that exciting. So I just would encourage you, we had a, our last meeting, we had another applicant, and I gave them the same advice, which is just, we really want to see high-quality materials. Looking at the renderings that you've shown us, I'm really concerned about the materials, and so I would give you the same advice. And, yeah, also, I think, you know, I'll just reiterate, the tower element I think needs to be emphasized, and also needs to have some better materials on it. And then, just because it's really important to me, I'll just reiterate real quick that I do think that the restaurant should be moved so that it's more on the corner, because I don't think that that existing outdoor, or that not existing, but the outdoor area that you've shown, it's too disassociated with the restaurant and everything else, that I don't think it's going to be used very well. But I think if you paired it with the cafe, rather, I think if you paired it with the cafe, you would get a lot more usability out of it. So I think that those are my comments for now.
Buzz, could I add one more, just while I'm, so there's also the thought of bulbouts on the corner of Bay and Christie that are not happening in your drawing, but are on the south corner of Bay Street, and want to make sure that it's safe for pedestrians, and that that corner has enough room for folks to cross and wait, so, that's it.
Well, my concern is a permanent architectural, and when I look at this nice perspective sketch, and then look at the floor plans, they don't match. You have this glass tower, but if you look at your floor plans, the windows don't line up with that at all. And the same with the section over to the left, this is Sheet A 4.0.
We did have an error in our floor plan for that unit.
Well, yeah, but if you look at the next block over, you're showing a whole wall of glass there, but if you look at your floor plans, it's not that way. Yeah, also, on the ground floor at the corner, it doesn't line up with the plans above. You know, it shows a straight wall going through on the ground floor, yet you show it stepping back. You know, if you look at the window arrangements in the rooms, they, it really doesn't, I don't know what that corner suite, I don't know what those rooms are, but one of them would appear to have only one small window in the corner, and, you know, it just, to me, looks like it's very incomplete, and particularly where you have the icon above, it's all glass. Well, if you look at your floor plans, it's not, it's the same old windows. And, you know, I think, and I think you just have to get it together, so there's some continuity in this thing. You know, it looks like we're being sold on all this glass, and yet, if you look at the floor plans, it's not there. So, you know, I think that's something that really needs to be worked on.
Well, I mean, it seems like we've got a trend going about having concerns about the architecture, and I would also like to see more verticality in the building. It looks more verticality and more sense of hierarchy. The entry sort of disappears in the renderings that we've got here, you can't, it doesn't draw any attention to itself as an entry. I'd like to see a better connection between that corner and the more public and active uses, as other people have said, that the outdoor seating isn't really connected to anything, and it's, I don't know that it's going to be very well-used, if you've got to take your cup of coffee and go across the lobby and around the corner and out the door to get to it. I think that Commissioner Kummerly's point about a potential shift of Christie Street to make the south side of the sidewalk function better, I thought that was really interesting, and that would be the only reason that I would suggest the 12-foot sidewalk along the hotel building. I think a 12-foot sidewalk is really important between Shellmount and the Bay Street extension, because people will be coming from that direction, walking back and forth, but there's very, very few people that'll be walking along the side of the hotel to the railroad tracks, I hope. So I don't see a need for a wide sidewalk there, but to have the potential to shift the street enough to accommodate whatever needs to be done for the sidewalk and the traffic seems like a really, really good idea. Whatever happens on that corner with the public, the public area and the tower, I'm really looking forward to seeing the simulation, the photo sim, looking down Bay Street at it, because that's going to be, there's, it seems that there are going to be two really primary views. One is coming down Christie from that intersection, not standing by the, not standing on the close corner, but, you know, where the cars come in towards Bay Street. That's a really, really prominent view, and that, we need to understand how things are going to look from there, and it needs to, I think it needs to have more interest than what's being shown now on that tower element. And similarly, the view from Bay Street, looking down that way, we really need to understand what it is that you are going to see, whether you are going to be seeing that, a red stripe, you know, a red facade, or are we going to see a tower of people's curtains closed, because it's a bunch of suites with people closing their curtains? I don't know, maybe the fitness center should be on one of those floors, so at least you see people doing something over there. The verticality, I like this, I like the idea of making the base really strong, but I do think it needs to have more transparency and more public side, towards the side where the public is going to be. And I'm glad that there is going to be a traffic study that will probably give us more information about things like having a left-turn pocket, about how that exiting, I think, I do also think it should just be an exit from the eastern side, because there's just a lot of conflict there, and a lot of people who aren't quite clear on where they're going, and are impatient getting out of the garage, and all these different potentials for difficult situations, so I'm glad to hear that we're going to have a traffic study on that.
So I wanted to highlight the traffic issue a bit more. I'm probably one of the 17% that uses that entrance quite a bit, because I try to avoid some of the more heavily-traveled entrances into Bay Street, and I actually was there a couple days ago, and what I noticed, and I notice every time I go there, is when you're coming down Christie, and as it intersects Bay Street, there, even though I travel that path quite a bit, it still seems to be very confusing, you still have to make a decision of whether you're going to go into the parking structure, or whether you're going to go into the metered parking, and what tends to happen is that cars slow down, and then at the same time, there are cars that are coming out of Bay Street to make a left-hand turn, and because of how the corner is situated, and I think you're, yeah, sort of this point where it pinches down where the pedestrians cross, a lot of times, cars run that stop sign, or they creep out a little too quickly, and then they, there becomes sort of this confusion right at the area where you're going to have cars entering your site. So I think that the traffic impact study is going to be really important in terms of seeing what actually happens at that intersection, because I think there definitely is a lot going on, and there needs to be some consideration for some sort of treatment for the left-hand turn into the roundabout. I think traffic is definitely going to be an issue there, because it already is now. And I think also, when, you know, this building is constructed, I think more people will be using that entrance, not necessarily because there's, because they're frequenting the hotel, but because now there's going to be something there to invite you to see. Right now, when you go there, there's usually an empty lot, and so some people, most people don't know that there's a way to enter Bay Street onto, or taking Christie, so now there's going to be something there that's going to draw their eye, it's going to catch their attention, and I think more cars are going to enter Bay Street from that side going forward after that project is built. So that's what I wanted to talk about with regard to the traffic. With regard to the exterior, I mean, my concern is the mixture of materials and the quality of the materials. If you were to have attended the last two or three Planning Commission meetings, really the focus and the trend is on durable materials, it's on concrete, it's on glass, it's on brick, you know, more industrial, paying homage to the history that we have here in Emeryville for our buildings, and really, there's, the trend is moving away from stucco and plaster, and for various reasons. I mean, we see a lot of projects around town where there are water intrusion issues and shrink-wrapped buildings because of problems with stucco failures, so that's a concern there. And there are a lot of materials in the project right now. I mean, we're looking at stone, brick, engineered wood, metal panel, glass, stucco, a green wall. So it seems like there's a lot going on, and that's already been expressed by the rest of the commission here, but I would say simplifying the design is, would be, would really go a long way towards solving some of these issues, and then the long-term constructability of it, the long-term maintenance of all these different facades and all these different textures and materials, so seeing something more simplified. And then, as far as the interior, I mean, I focus mostly on the ground floor, and I think it's, I agree with the DCC comments in that you'll probably have a more active use of the cafe area if it were to be more open to the public, so I'm in agreement with the commissioners who've talked about, you know, maybe swapping that with the meeting room area, and, because the flow just is kind of odd. I mean, you're in the bar-cafe, but the patio seating is all the way across the lobby, so you're going to have to walk all the way over there to access the patio, and I think the patio needs to be more open to people who are shopping at Bay Street, for instance. And then with the meeting rooms, if that gets swapped with where that sunroom area is, perhaps you can then dedicate a small area outside where you have the door exiting from the sunroom, to have a private patio for the conference room function there, and so that they can have their meals there if they choose to do so, just making it a little bit more flexible. I think there's a way to do that. I understand you have a challenge with where the food prep is located, but I think that that's something that can be worked with. And what else? I think it's great having the peer review and having their comments, I think that that's very constructive. I think having the more, I agree with the rest of the commissioners with regard to the verticality, just having more vertical elements as opposed to horizontal. Right now, there's just a lot going on, and it just needs to maybe be just more simplified. And then, with regard to the room layout, I hadn't noticed what Commissioner Cardoza noticed with regard to the windows not lining up, so that definitely needs to be addressed. It's very schematic right now, and I understand that, but I think the next time we see this proposal, we'll want to see more of that developed. And I liked Commissioner Donaldson's idea of maybe putting the fitness room on that side of the building, so that you could see, you know, more, it would activate that area more, you would be able to see people in, you know, things happening inside the hotels as opposed to drawn curtains, which would more than likely happen if there were just hotel rooms there. I think that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what I've heard already. I do feel like this site, it's in an area, traffic-wise, pedestrian-wise, it has a number of issues, and it seems like this is an opportunity to try to resolve some of those. Commissioner Kummerly's comments about that corner on the northwest corner of Bay Street, and coming around that corner, there's three pinch spots that make it, I mean, I've run into other people just coming around that corner on the sidewalks, and if there's a way to push that out and use this opportunity and the retail pad opportunity to fix that, address that issue. And then also, I don't, I mean, I don't know if any of us know what's going to happen on the lot to the north of this, but the depth of that lot means that there's going to need to be some kind of traffic pattern through there. I mean, this is the depth of the entire Bay Street complex, and so I'm wondering if Bay Street won't eventually continue through this roundabout and through that lot to the north, and meet Shellmount at some point further north, for, you know, a number of different reasons. And so, just making sure that that flexibility exists with this design, and to kind of continue on Commissioner Cardoza's comments, that gets to the floor plan of the ground floor. When you show the ground floor plan and you show the profile, the second floor coming out over the driveway and towards the north, and then the four columns picking it up, that doesn't seem to match what I see on the rendering, which seems to show the, seems to show the first floor sort of wrapping around the turnabout and extending out further to the west there, and just making sure that whatever happens there, and as much as we acknowledge the roundabout, that we also maybe acknowledge the possibility that in the future, this is a throughway connection. I see the fountain at the center of the roundabout maybe as the opportunity for public art that doesn't feel tacked on, but actually feels sort of monumental and intentional. Regarding the plans, I agree with most of the commissioners who've mentioned that just taking that corner and making that the space where the cafe is, the exercise space possibly, I mean, not only does it help sort of engage Bay Street, but also it's the southern exposure there, and so, you know, a meeting room where you're going to, half the time you're going to have a PowerPoint presentation going on and the blinds down, isn't necessarily what you want at that corner. I think you'd want something where people do want the light, the sun coming in, the brightness, and creating a greater sense of entry. Right now, the step-down approach where you've got these multiple little boxes that drop down to one that's basically a single-story... down to one that's basically a single story, doesn't really create that sense of entry. One thing I saw on the rear rendering that, that I kind of liked was the sort of, it seems like one of the nicer materials you're using is this red stone material, whatever it is, stone cladding. And, and the way that you create a pedestal with the, with the elements on top. I don't know, I, I actually, when you come around to the south side, it's, it seems like that's where the south rendering there, you start to play with it a little bit and it starts to volumetrically get a little nicer. And then having these towers of the red material continuing up. I think that's an opportunity that you might be able to take around to the west side and actually help improve the west side elevation. I do feel like there's just too many, too many things going on and maybe narrowing it down to a few of what you've got. Not a big fan of the bookend walls that you show, that show up at a couple of locations to different volumes. It's just, it seems like a move that was done a lot in like late eighties hotels. I do agree that if we need the wedge, then making the wedge, you know, the shed roof maybe at the corner. And I think that's, those are my primary comments.
I, I have just one more and that is on the east side, that area, the, the roof area that's going to be visible from a lot of the hotel rooms and also from the terraces and from whatever gets built on the pad to the north. I would put a pitch in for green roofing up there for a green roof treatment of some sort. I think that would make it really nice.
I also have a comment about, I guess it's the conditioning equipment that you have adjacent to the windows, which is this kind of little striped panel. I think that's singularly unattractive and you don't show it in some cases and you do show it in other cases and.
Are those louvers?
It's like, there's so many things that are inaccurate on these drawings that I think that needs to be, we need to see something that's consistent.
Are those louvers?
Yeah, it would be a metal louvered system.
I have one other comment too, and that is that Hyatt House, I think is far and away the nicest looking hotel in Emeryville. And so I would just encourage you to sort of take your cues from that. I, I know it wasn't built as, you know, with Hyatt House in mind, but I, I think it's, not only, I think is that, is, not only is that, is that a nicer looking hotel, I, I think it's, since this is envisioned as a Hyatt, I, I think it has the potential to be confusing to the customer as well in that, you know, they're going to see this really nice looking hotel, nice looking extended stay hotel, just, you know, practically next door and then, you know, a not, not as nice Hyatt branded hotel.
It's one of the tallest hotels.
It is too. That, that's true. It is, it's noticeable, but I think even if it was shorter, it would still be very, very handsome.
Yes.
And maybe to give you more direction, the, in the committee meeting, you seemed really proud of the hotel in Pennsylvania that just opened up. And if you look at the style of that, it's very modern, it's very clean. It doesn't have all the articulation up and down and in and out. That's from what I could see from the one picture, it's very curvilinear, it's very smooth. And I'm not saying to do that here, but that's just to me, an idea of something that's more urban, more modern than what we're seeing here. So just to kind of give you an idea of the two differences, that's something I would use as kind of a reference point.
Or even the one that you showed before that one, I forget where that was.
Long Beach?
Yeah, the Long Beach, the high-rise.
Yeah, I don't know if I said it before, but I'll say it again. I, I agree with the green roof. I think that would be a really great amenity for folks looking down from all directions on the, above the first floor space.
Is the building height a, a function of construction types?
Yep. It's a function of construction type and also the, the size of the hotel. We're at 170 keys, plus or minus one or two, and that is, that's about as big as you can build these Hyatt places in this market. It's what the market's demanding here. So you could go 200 feet, but it's not what the hotel market is telling us to do here.
I think that was in the day when there was to be a condominium on top of the hotel.
Oh, yeah? Really? Okay, gotcha. I wanted to clarify one thing, cause I forgot to mention in my presentation, but that roundabout is an existing easement. So I do want to just clarify that in this location, there are two separate parcels that will ultimately be owned by two separate companies. And there is an easement on record that extends from Christie to the property line to the north. So that future connectivity is a hundred percent there and I, I would imagine envisioned if Madison develops Site B, but regardless, there is the ability to drive from here to here. So just to clarify.
So you own half of it, but you have an easement over the other half of it?
We, yeah, we, I think our property line falls in the mid and we ease it back as a driveway.
Let me just add a little bit to that. Madison Marquette is proposing to move that easement a little bit because right now it doesn't really line up with the rest of Bay Street. It's offset a little bit to the west. It's not really in the location where this drawing shows, I don't think. And our Public Works Director has expressed concern that when that easement does get relocated, which will require an action by the planning commission as part of the approved subdivision map for Bay Street, that the shape of the new easement should reflect the shape of the roundabout so that the public will have access, legal access to use the full roundabout and not just the, the middle of it. So that will be coming back to you, I believe, in conjunction with the hotel application, but it will be a separate application.
So Madison Marquette is under no obligation to allow access through that to parcel B?
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are?
That's what that easement is. It's a public access easement in favor of the city for full public access from Christie Avenue North to parcel B. They're just proposing to move it a little bit.
And make it a roundabout now because there's no development in Site B.
And bulb it out for the roundabout.
Right.
Right. Is that difference, isn't, I thought the Bay Street between Christie and whatever Aloney was a public street, but the sidewalks were in an easement? Is that correct?
It's confusing. The roadway where the cars drive, there is a easement, a public easement over that. So it's basically, it's a, it's owned by Madison Marquette, but there's a public easement over the roadway so that where the cars drive is public. There is no similar easement that covers the sidewalks. So the sidewalks are private and the roadway is public. It's a unusual situation.
So it would appear that cars arriving at the hotel would stop on the public street. So people would go in to check in and then come out and park their car.
Well, they could pull over, pull over to the curb, yeah. Pull over to the curb and stop for a few minutes, go into the hotel.
So given, given that the, the eas, so given that then there is this planned public easement and they're proposing a roundabout, does, did Public Works staff or did any other city staff have any concerns about the roundabout, given that, that easement, you know, may some, the, the public street, the public street with the easement over it, whatever, may someday go through to Site B?
That's the intent.
That's the intent. So there, but there were no concerns? I mean, to me, it's, it's, it seems like then an odd place to put a roundabout.
Yeah. Well, I, that's what they're proposing. I mean, I think part, part of the thing is that it's unknown right now, what's going to happen with Site B. You know, Site B is in our property management plan, which we have to finish and have the city council and oversight board approve and send off to the state. And then the state has to approve it and they have no time limit for approving it. And eventually we'll, they'll tell us what we can do with Site B. So Site B is a huge question mark at this point. I think what they're trying to do here is to make that public easement be usable whether or not Site B develops in such a way that that easement would be needed. So you can drive up to this terminus in Bay Street and turn around and go back the other way if you had to.
Yeah. I guess I, my, my comment would just be even without, even without it going through to Site B or with it going through to Site B, the roundabout seems really unnecessary and it just seems like a waste of pavement.
Well, it's, it's kind of nice if that's a dead end to, to have a loop around to get out again.
I believe, I believe they're proposing a fountain or some kind of a similar feature in the middle. It would create kind of an entry.
Because otherwise you're going onto private property to get out of there. You'd have to back up and.
I will say though, that I've seen different diagrams from Madison Marquette that have shown different configurations of that roundabout. So clearly they've got to decide where exactly it's going to be and what exactly it's going to look like before the planning commission can be asked to approve a, a relocated easement.
And Charlie, speaking of the, the fountain in the roundabout, I'd like to go on record that we, we don't do a fountain. Every water feature we have in this town is non-operated. The one at Bay Street, I haven't seen operated in the last couple of days. The one at Doyle Hollis Park hasn't operated, the one at.
That's because we're having a drought.
Yeah. So that's, that's the point I'm getting to, is that in California, this may be the norm and not the exception. And I think what we need to do is plan for that and do something like an art piece, a planting mound, something else that I think we should just go on record and say that a fountain is just not something we should consider.
In defense of Madison, we actually dropped the fountain in in some earlier renderings and I don't know what Madison is planning to do there, but we had.
Could be like that plastic. I think you can do fountains with sort of sculpture elements in the middle that look fine when they're turned off. So, you know.
But an empty fountain doesn't look good no matter what's in the middle of it.
Charlie?
Empty, yeah, but if it, yeah.
Sorry, it's late.
Charlie, I have a question. Before this comes back to us for consideration, for approval, is that traffic study going to be done? The questions that I raised about potentially adjusting the width or the placement of the street, is that, can that happen?
Oh, the traffic study will definitely be done before we bring this back to you.
Can that, and that, can we get that in there too?
Yeah, we'll ask them to take a look at that.
Okay. All right.
Any further comment?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the next version.
Hopefully this year.
Soon.
It'll be soon.
Great.
Next item on the agenda is commissioners' comments.
I just have one. It was some time ago that we approved a prefab sustainable construction house over the Cabriner House. And it's been built and it's been featured in Dwell Magazine. There's a multiple page spread about it that talks about what a wonderful idea it is and how well it was executed.
So what's the location? I wasn't here then. What street is it on?
On Bowdrey.
It's on Bowdrey. Just north of 53rd.
Right behind my house.
It's built by Simpatico is the builder that did it.
55th, rather. North of 55th.
Oh, okay.
Right around the corner from the Doyle Street Cafe.
By the cafe, yeah.
Did they talk about how it's.
I do have some, a kind of a lengthy comment and it's basically looking toward our future. And, you know, when we're, when we've been looking at a lot of developments that come up, we're hearing a lot of reasons why we're getting what we're getting, such as low-rise stucco buildings is because of cost of development and the cost of property and stuff. And I've been paying a lot of attention to what's been going on in the area and particularly in San Francisco. And as I know, Emeryville is not San Francisco. I have always looked at us as a very minute San Francisco because everything San Francisco offers, we offer in a very, very small form. And I just think as commissioners, I'd like us to take a more serious look and a, and a stronger stance with developers. And I've, I've got three articles from the San Francisco Bay Times or the San Francisco Business Times. And in that, there's a number of things, somebody just bought a really big commercial property in Walnut Creek. And it says institutional buyers like Tishman Spire have turned their gaze towards the East Bay as prices for buildings in San Francisco and the peninsula near record highs. The East Bay's recovery has been slower, he said, but submarkets in downtown Walnut Creek, Emeryville, Oakland Center and Pleasant Hill Bart are bright spots for institutional investors and tenants getting priced out of San Francisco. So, I mean, the writing is on the wall that in our proximity to San Francisco makes us a viable player in the game. And the properties we have in, in Emeryville are far and few between. And I'm really fearful of us squandering these precious resources on, and I have no problem with the developer making a profit. I know how that's, they provide jobs and money, but I think they can build better products and make better profits if they just make a more long-term investment. And I know that's probably not what they want to do. But another thing, you know, another article about a new hotel going into Mission Bay says that downtown San Francisco is one of the most difficult cities for new construction due to land scarcity and the high barriers for new construction. So what's happening there, what they're saying that they can't build here is happening there. And building in San Francisco is going nuts. They've got so many new buildings in the pipeline and it's just unreasonable to think that we can't get a spillover of 1% in, in Emeryville. So as planning commissioners, I'd just like us to keep that in mind when we get projects on our few remaining parcels, especially these signature parcels like Site B, like the Nadye site, and that we ask the developers, you know, we want you to make a profit and we understand that building rental units is something you can sell easier and start turning a profit faster than condominiums. But condominiums are selling. They're selling in San Francisco. One unit sold out with a waiting list. I've talked to Bay Bridge, which they're selling very inexpensively, but they have a waiting list. And I think that as we talked before, we need people who are invested in Emeryville. And I think in projects like Sherman Williams, that's a big project. And I think we could ask for at least when building a condominiums in that space. So I just, in, in asking this, I just want us, as a commission, to, to really look at, at the bigger picture and overall, and I think we do. But when a developer says, well, you know, that's really not marketable for us, I think we need to push the envelope a little more and, and use what we know is happening around us as a basis for, yes, you can do that.
But most of the buildings going up in San Francisco are rental, not condominiums.
There's a lot of condominiums. I mean, we're talking maybe 2550 or 2575%, but they're still building condos. We're getting none.
Yeah, but not in the same quantity and they tend to be super luxury rather than.
Right. But what I'm saying is they're building condos there and they're selling. So that doesn't mean that, you know, out of an eight and a half acre site with four buildings going on, one of those buildings can't be condos. And that's all I'm saying is that we need, you know, as commissioners, we have that right to not only follow the general plan, but to look out for our future.
Well, I thought they said at Sherman Williams, they, they're doing it in phases and one of the later phases could be a condominium.
Could be, yeah.
And it was going to be high-rise too. But, you know, it's what you can get financing for is the.
Well, if San Francisco's getting financing, would, building costs there cost more than they do here? I mean, I know the Nadye site is nothing compared to the cost that people pay for land in San Francisco. Nothing at all. I mean, it's a fraction. So that can't be the driving factor. So I think we can, you know, I'm just saying, we're not going to get everything we want, but we have to ask.
So just food for thought, I, I think, I've actually been meaning to bring this up, but I think just because actually we approve condo projects, doesn't mean we're going to get ownership units. And just because we approve rental units, doesn't mean we're going, we're not going to get ownership units as well. I think, so the, I think a lot of times developers will build rental units to sort of wait out the construction defect period and then convert them to condos, which is, you know, it's a legitimate tactic. And then the other thing is, I think a lot of, especially here, there are, I know of several condominium projects where most of the units are rented. And it's actually, I think it's worse for the project and worse for, I would say even the community to have that situation because the buildings aren't managed well. They're managed by an HOA, which doesn't have the ability to manage like a, like an apartment building does.
PPP is only about 50% owner occupied and Watergate is about the same.
Yeah, I think.
Yet they seem to be well-managed projects.
I think when you have projects that are that, that have that many units, you can do that. Cause the, I think the HOAs are better off and can manage better, but I think when you have medium, small to medium-sized projects, you, you get in trouble real fast.
So what, what projects I remember, cause I ride by several Pulte projects.
Commissioner Keller, so commissioner comments period is generally reserved for short announcements. If, and I, I, my concern is that we're starting, the discussion is starting to get into an area of discussion that hasn't been agendized. So if the commission would like to have a discussion about the topics that you're talking about now, I would suggest that we agendize that and you can have a full discussion amongst yourself. Or if it's something that we would want to agendize for, let's say a, you know, something to put on your retreat, for example, we could do that as well. something to put on your retreat, for example, we could do that as well. But my concern is that we're starting to have a non-agendized discussion.
One other thing, Charlie, we talked last fall about, early fall, about doing a, a tour and we put it off until the winter because we'd had the big problem with the art.com sign and we thought it would be good to do our tour in, it was darker and, and look at signs and do you think we could still plan something like that?
Well, my recollection is that the most recent discussion the Commission had was that you decided you'd rather have a tour of family-friendly housing.
Family-friendly housing.
So we're, we're thinking about that.
We could be up in bed. We could do it in the daytime.
Good, then I can go home and go to sleep.
Family-friendly housing with LED signs.
That'll narrow it down.
Oxymoron.
Impact of LED signs on family-friendly housing.
Sure, is defined family-friendly housing.
There you go. Well.
Yeah. All the meaning.